Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the March 30th meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. We meet here in City Council chambers, John Farrow Council chambers, every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday of the month at 10:00 a.m. And we, on the first Friday of the month, we actually meet in Van Nuys City Hall. If I can ask everybody to take their seats and to begin the meeting, we have a packed morning and want to welcome all of our visitors and our viewers on Channel 35 as well. Let me start today by wishing a very happy birthday to Councilwoman Janice Hahn, whose birthday it is today. Happy birthday, Janice! And we're excited to celebrate your birthday. We also have a number of other commemorations and will be getting to shortly, but I want to welcome Councilmember-elect Richard Alakon as well to our chambers. Welcome him back! We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday in John Farrow Council chambers and City Hall. Those of you who live closer to Van Nuys City Hall can always come down to Van Nuys City Hall and watch the proceedings and testify remotely from there on any matters that are before us. We are televised live on Channel 35 each meeting, and we are rebroadcast in the evening as well. You can catch us through the Internet at our city's homepage at lacity.org and also by telephone by calling 213-621-CITY to listen via audio to our committee and our full council meetings. I also wanted to welcome my great friend and Mr. Alakon's predecessor, Alex Padilla, State Senator Alex Padilla, to our council chambers. It's an honor to have you here as well. As he said, I heard somebody's trying to take my seat, but I know he was here to welcome our new council member back to the council. We also are available online in terms of our agendas. Anybody who wishes to see the business of the City Council can go online and see our agendas. We have them in the back for individuals of the public, and we usually have council ambassadors here, local high school students who can help you navigate the ins and outs of the City Council. We have the capacity, as I mentioned, for folks to testify remotely through Van Nuys City Hall or here live in City Council chambers. Every item which we take up in our agenda receives a public hearing either in committee or here in the full City Council, so you're able to avail yourself of that. And each meeting, we have a time for general public comment on items that are not on our agenda but are nevertheless under our jurisdiction. I want to thank the council members who are here pursuant to council rules on time. Thank you to Councilmember Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Reyes, Smith, Weiss, and Wesson. I know that Councilmember Parks and Rosendahl are on their way here shortly, and we would like to, we would like to, at this time, ask them to join us. As soon as we have one more member or two more members, we will have a quorum, so sit tight, and in about one or two minutes, we will begin the official business of the City Council. Thank you. Oh, and I was just giving it one last announcement, that tomorrow is Councilmember Cardenas's birthday, so happy birthday to Tony Cardenas tomorrow, one day early as well.
And we hope with that that we will be able to be well positioned to represent America in the Olympics, the 31st Olympics, so spread the word and keep going.
Should be kind enough to lead us in the pledge of allegiance from the podium over there. If I can ask everybody to please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. Please take your seats. If we can take out of order first, item number 53.
And, Mr. President, that's a communication from the city clerk and resolutions, and public hearing has not been held.
Okay. See if we have any cards on item 53. Do not see any cards from the public, so we will open and close that public hearing. Mr. Martinez, anything you need to add? All right. This is certifying the election. Please, Madam Clerk, open the roll on item 53. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Congratu-- didn't push in time, congratulations. And now we will do the official swearing-in of Councilmember Richard Alakon.
Right hand, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear--
I do solemnly swear--
--to support the Constitution of the United States--
To support the Constitution of the United States--
--and the Constitution of the State of California--
And the Constitution of the State of California--
--and the Charter of the City of Los Angeles--
And the Charter of the City of Los Angeles--
--and to faithfully discharge--
And to faithfully discharge--
--the duties of--
The duties of--
--the office of--
The office of--
--member of the City Council's 7th District--
Member of the City Council's 7th District--
--to the best of my ability--
To the best of my ability--
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Alakon, as soon as you get finished signing that, we have a very special nameplate for you to officially assume your position with the accent mark on the "O." We want to thank the-- so we will be putting this down here. And when you take your seat, which I know Mr. Cardenas has kept warm for you over the past couple of years, we'd love to hear some words from you as well, so please welcome Councilmember Richard Alakon. Nope, it's on. You don't have to bring it close.
Okay. I'm still learning. Well, the reporters keep asking me what it's like to come back to City Hall, and I tell them it's like I didn't leave, because coming back, this is such a comfortable place in the breadth of my career, having worked for Mayor Bradley and then five and a half years in this chamber. Only the council members would appreciate what a pleasure it is to serve the public in this particular way. Obviously, there are many people who are responsible, so I don't take this as any individual compliment. It is really the community that puts us in this position, and it is them that deserve the honor. First, let me honor my mother, who is with us today. And when you are debating with me, I guarantee you, you'll know that she's the one who trained me in debate as a young man. My sisters and my daughter Andrea, I think most of you know, and today is a very special day being-- being that this is Cesar Chavez's holiday, recognized by the state. That holiday was created by my sister along with Richard Palanca. She was the chair of the committee that established that holiday. And now she's working on making it a national holiday, and we just heard that some of the kids who are out in the streets advocating are calling for the national holiday, and so I am particularly pleased to have my sister present. Of course, the love of my life, Flora Montes de Oca, who many of you know is my fiancee, really has put me in a position to be a better service to the city, focused and ready to go. We're very excited about this process. This is about community service. A lot of people think we're politicians, but I think each of us views ourselves as a civil servant, somebody who is committed to providing service. Now, we all do it in different ways. I'm just happy to be here, to engage with you. I hope that we can bring the City of Los Angeles to a better place. This is a very challenging time for all of us. I just look forward to working with each and every one of you and helping each of us to achieve the greatest contributions that we can individually and collectively. Thank you, Eric, for your support in the transition process, and I'm looking forward to chairing the Education and Neighborhood Council Committee. As a former teacher and certainly as one of the primary advocates of the neighborhood councils when I was on the council last time, I'm excited about that possibility. I recognize the challenges, but I'm looking forward to engaging the city in the discussion that the mayor has created around the education issue as well as the discussion the entire city has created about neighborhood councils. And you have my commitment to work with each and every one of you to make both of those systems better. That will be my goal, my primary goal, along with all the other things that City Council members do. So, I don't want to take a lot of time. We have a lot of more important presentations to make, but thank you so much, and I'm excited to work day in and day out to improve my community. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Alakon, and welcome back home. It's great to have you here. We will, as is customary on Fridays, begin now with some presentations before we go through the rest of the council agenda, and for one of our most special presentations of the year, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Wendy Gruel for presentation from each one of our council districts to some incredible women of Los Angeles. Councilmember Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. President, and what a great day, and to have Richard Alakon here as well. Richard trained me. I'm here partly because of Richard Alakon, because I met him when I was just 18 years old, interning in Mayor Bradley's office. And I think he'd be very proud, Richard, to see at least two of us who had worked for him and many people around this table who also had had some role in his 20 years of being mayor of the city, so congratulations, so thank you. I get the pleasure today to kind of kick off Women's History Month and the celebration of pioneer women. Normally, Tom LeBonge would be here today and has done this presentation before, but I am lucky enough to be in his stead. This is the 19th year that the City Council and the Commission on the Status of Women have joined together to honor women representing each council district for their notable contributions to the City of Los Angeles. Women's History Month, which was first proclaimed in 1980, is a call to all Americans to remember the achievements and contributions of women in schools, workforce, and the community throughout the country. March was identified the month to take a moment to reflect and recognize as a force in history as National Women's History Month. The pioneer women you will hear about today have made a substantial contribution to their community and have met one or more of the following criteria. They live or work in the nominating council district. They contribute toward improving the community within her council district and/or the city in the areas of education, business, sports, arts, science, community, health, or city government. And they provide contributions toward improving the status of women in the City of Los Angeles. Also, they're involved in philanthropic endeavors, performed acts of courage, or participate and excel in a non-traditional field. So you will hear today from each of our council members a little brief part about each of the communities that are here today. Mr. Garcetti, I will let you do a quick--
Thank you. I appreciate it. And thank you very much, Councilmember Gruel, but we have another special guest who I know wanted to add his good wishes to Mr. Alakon and to the pioneer women that are here. It's my great honor to welcome the great mayor of Los Angeles. Please welcome Antonio Villarosa.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilmember Gruel, for letting me just say a few words. I was just with the council president and a number of the members of the council making a presentation about the economic impact of the Olympic Games, some $700 billion to the local economy. Eighty-nine percent of the city and the region is supporting an Olympic bid in 2016, so we were there. But I wanted to come by to do two things. One, I want to acknowledge all of the pioneer women who are being honored today. Acknowledge you. I know the role of the pioneers. My mother was one, and it is indeed an honor to have you and the work that you do for our city. I also know that today we're going to be acknowledging Oscar Romero, the archbishop, who in many ways was not just the conscience of a nation but of a hemisphere. And I want to acknowledge all of you who are here from El Salvador and here in Los Angeles and supported that. But I wanted to say just real quickly, welcome, Councilmember Richard Alakon. I've known Richard now for almost 30 years, a very, very long time, more than we would probably care to admit, but I can tell you that in the time that I've known him, this is a man who was made for public service. He's a local boy, grew up here, went to grammar in high school in the San Fernando Valley. Could have left, but stayed. Stayed because he understood he had a responsibility to his community. I first met him when we were working with the United Way. Then he was working with Tom Bradley, the LA's greatest mayor. After that, a council member, a state senator, an assembly member for a brief period, and now back on the City Council. And I'll tell you, we are very fortunate to have someone like Richard Alakon, who I think is going to bring the experience that comes with having worked in the legislature, working in the City Council in another period, but more importantly, coming from a community that's looking for the kind of strong representation it's been used to with Councilmember Alakon, with former Councilmember Padilla. So I wanted to welcome him, thank him, and thank you for allowing me a few minutes to say a few words. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Villarosa, and State Senator Alex Padilla, and the predecessor in the 7th Council District also wanted to add his good wishes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Haven't said that in a while. Colleagues, how you doing? I miss you guys.
We miss you. We miss you too.
It's different in Sacramento, boy. But it's going well, and I'll have you know, and I think about you guys every day. A good friend of mine gave me, as a gift during the holidays, an old picture of City Hall, and asked that I put it up in my Sacramento office so that I don't forget where I came from. And believe you me, that's the first thing I think about every morning I walk into the office, but I wanted to be here today to congratulate my successor. You know, this kid's got potential. But seriously, I'm here to congratulate Richard and to share a couple of things with all of you. First of all, my thank yous, when I was last here, trying to say thank you, I thought I had the flu. Wasn't exactly the flu, and it wasn't, I wasn't in the condition to share with you all what I really wanted to share from the bottom of my heart, and I'll get an opportunity privately to talk to all of you, but thank you again for your years of support and working together. But I'm so happy that Richard got elected, and I think a couple of things need to be recognized. First of all, six months ago, nobody would have predicted this, and I'll address something not in too much detail, but something that I'm sure is on everybody's minds. What has happened in the San Fernando Valley, the relationships between Richard and Tony and myself and Wendy and Dennis and others, but particularly in the northeast end of the San Fernando Valley, today is not what people would have imagined it was just a few months ago. And it's caused a lot of people true happiness and appreciation. It's caused-- it's caused a few people, it's caused a few people some concern and consternation, but fundamentally, and I said this repeatedly during the campaign, as did Richard and the mayor and others, we have achieved in an area, an important area of Los Angeles, what I believe the people deserve. People expect and deserve their leaders to be working together for the betterment of the community. And for too many years-- and for too many years, while we were each doing that individually, you know, we realized in the back of our minds that we were selling ourselves short, because collectively we can achieve so much more. And I'm just proud that we have found this place, so much so that Richard has the best hire in his new district director, my brother. And while I had the privilege and the honor of continuing a lot of the projects that former council member and now new council member Alakon had started when he left office, I get now to hand the baton back to him and continue the progress and the momentum that we've built in the northeast San Fernando Valley. So, Richard, congratulations. Couldn't be happier for you, and I have my list of requests in your staff's hands.
Thank you to the mayor and to the state senator for both coming in, both former council members. Great to have them here, and thank you for your good wishes to our newest council member. And that will return to President Protem Gruel.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to ask my pioneer woman to come up, Lori Dinkin, if she could. I have to tell you, when I saw Lori upstairs for this program this morning, and I said I was going to say a few words about her, she said the only word I could not use to describe her was "nice," and that speaks volumes about this woman as sweet. Was it sweet? It was sweet. 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 She's nice, but she's-- she's also sweet, but she doesn't want me to say that. But Lori Dinkin is someone, when I met her for the first time in her home and we had coffee, she was a tough cookie, asking a lot of questions about what I was going to do for her community and for her neighborhood. But Lori has been a strong advocate and a person in this district and I think across the San Fernando Valley for many years, and I want to tell you just a little bit about her. Lori Dinkin was born on June 2nd, 1919, in Danzig, Germany. At the age of 19 years old, Lori worked as a maid in England. In 1939, she came to the United States to study at Hebrew Union College. She earned her credentials-- she earned her credentials in teaching and became a religious teacher at a hot shalom in Northridge. She has lived in Valley Village for 45 years, founding member of the Valley Village Homeowner Association, and the president for over 12 years. She was instrumental in preventing over-expansion at Burbank Airport. We need your help in trying to get them to not fly over the valley. She created a voice for the Valley Village community by working with all the city departments. She is infamous in the city about her knowledge of the specific plan and the general plan, everything that she can about planning. She is the past president of Sisterhood at Temple Beth Hillel. She's worked with the Valley Interfaith Council and volunteered her time to outreach for seniors, and told me recently that one of the things she'd like to do is read books to children, so we're planning your future for you at our library. But she handles quality of life issues and problems and provides innovative ideas on how to resolve them. And so, really, Lori-- And so really, Lori is someone who has been a mentor. She has been a nice nooch. She has been someone who will call up and tell you exactly what she thinks, and can organize a group of people to take on challenges in the city of Los Angeles. So it really is my honor and pleasure to present to Lori Dinkin, for my district, the 2007 Pioneer Woman of the Year Award. Congratulations, Lori.
I want to thank Wendy Grul and her staff, with whom I worked for many, many years. I also worked with Joel Rex and his staff, and it has been a wonderful memory for me. I don't know if Richard Alacon remembers, but I got a beautiful plaque when he was state senator, and I treasured that, the tanks in my dining room. I do want to tell you that when I came to America, I was so grateful, I was like half a step ahead of the Nazis. And I was so grateful that I didn't go up in smoke in one of the concentration camps and that I was being accepted here in America. I immigrated legally, and I have my, of course, and I have my citizenship, which was probably the proudest day in my life. And I had made up my mind, because the country had given me freedom, my family eventually all came out of Germany, and I made up my mind then that I would work for the community, work for my new country. And I hope I have made a difference in Valley Village. We have a specific plan. I'm still working on mansionization, and I'm not going to retire peacefully. I'm going to be on the board, and I do hope that I will have many more good days and work with all of... My daughter is very active on the west side. I see Councilman Rosendahl there, she works with him, Jackie Friedman. And we have many good... Also, I want to thank the staff that we have had the pleasure of working with, and my wonderful boards all through the years. You know, no man is an island, no woman is an island. You can't work by yourself, you have to have lots of people around it. I had the pleasure of working with a wonderful, wonderful board. I had the pleasure of working with a wonderful councilwoman, Wendy Grul, who has been really, really receptive. Her staff has helped us a lot. So I'm so, so grateful, and I hope that I will live a few more years so I can accomplish some more things. Thank you so, so much.
I'd now like to introduce our colleague for our first presentation, and for all of the other councilmembers, I will go around the horseshoe. So following Mr. Alacon, will be Mr. Cardenas, then Ms. Hahn, and then Mr. Parks, and we'll go to the other side. Thank you.
Mr. President, members, it's, you know, when you think, what's the first thing you're going to do? I couldn't think of something as pleasurable to do, to recognize, a woman who has been a pioneer in our community, but I do it with very mixed emotions because she passed away just recently. I'd like to ask Blinkie Rodriguez and his family to step forward as I make this presentation. Lily Rodriguez was not a common name in City Hall, but she's very well-known in the world of martial arts. Lily Rodriguez was a true champion in life and in the world of martial arts. She was a wife, a mother, grandmother, and a role model for many. Today Lily is remembered for her accomplishments as an athlete, as a community counselor, trainer, teacher, and hero, and most importantly, as a mother. She was able to juggle a family and a non-traditional boxing career that took her to countries across Asia, Europe, and Mexico. She was honored in the Boxing Hall of Fame. In fact, her and her husband Blinkie are the very first husband and wife to enter that esteemed establishment. And also the Martial Arts Hall of Fame, where, the Martial Arts Museum, excuse me, where they are also the first husband and wife to have that honor. They are also honored by the Amateur Athletic Foundation, and Lily was recognized as, by the California Golden Gloves Association and Women in Sports. She was the first Latina to win a kickboxing championship in Japan. And in 1975, she won the featherweight championship of the world at the Tokyo Dome. Most athletes refer to Lily as a true pioneer in the world of boxing. But I recognize her as a pioneer in the community of the San Fernando Valley, and in particularly Silmar, which was her home for so many years. Lily was a true community advocate who was dedicated to improving the lives of youth throughout the San Fernando Valley. Of course, you know her husband Blinkie has been a critical component in the fight against gang violence in our community. But I have to tell you that I've known this family since I was just a kid in high school. We used to learn to walk carefully when the Yukita's family was around because every one of them was a black belt in karate. And Lily was no exception, a phenomenal talent in the ring. But I have to tell you, her greatest accomplishments were with her husband Blinkie. At home, at work, in community service, in church, these two had a bond like no other could imagine. Thirty-seven years of marriage, beginning when Blinkie was just 14. And so we are all deeply, deeply saddened at her loss, but we are so blessed to have had her in our life. She and Blinkie dedicated their lives to community service and to countering gang violence in our community after their son was killed in a drive-by shooting. Sonny was the inspiration that led to many others' lives being saved. And so I couldn't think of a better person to recognize as my first recognition, as my first act as, in this round, of being a councilmember, as somebody who impacted our community and our world by breaking the glass barrier in the field of martial arts for women, but also at every step of the way, doing it as a mother, and in later years as a grandmother. When I asked Blinkie what was the most important thing she contributed, he said that all of her martial arts and athletic accomplishments occurred after she had six children. She is really a tribute in so many ways, and we're going to miss her sorely, but I hope in some small way that recognizing her as a pioneer woman for the 7th council district, that we will continue to build the hope, in particularly young women, who seek to break the glass barrier in whatever field they choose. And so I think that is the spirit, that captures the spirit of the pioneer woman, and that certainly is the spirit which Lily embraced for her life. So with that, I'd like to present, I cannot present Lily flowers, but we did give flowers at the cemetery, and we have the city seal at Mission Cemetery, not too far from where my son is buried. And so I know that Lily is with us today, sharing in this tremendous accomplishment, but really hoping that we continue to do the good work to rid gag violence from our communities. With that, I'd like to present this certificate of tribute to her husband, her soulmate, her brother, her closest everything. Blinkie Rodriguez, this certificate is to recognize your wife for her tremendous accomplishments. We all loved her, we continue to do so, and we hope that her life will be the example for many young people to do the right thing in our community, as well as with the work that you continue to do.
I have two of my six children here today, four of my eight granddaughters, because that's what it's all about. How do you lose the love of your life? I don't think, there's a book on that. I've never been in uncharted waters. I lost my son, and God turned it around for the good. He said, "All things come together for good, for those who love and have faith in the Lord Jesus Christ who have been called according to His purpose." So that's where I stand. My wife, what an extraordinary privilege I enjoyed for almost four decades. I was a young, young, young boy. She was seven years older than me. You know, my wife, as a young boy, taught me how to be a man, and the most beautiful thing about it is she allowed me to be the man. I can't express today, I cannot articulate in words how special my love affair was. It was thriving. Romeo and Juliet didn't have nothing on me and Lily. I don't care. Richard, I thank you. I thank all of you. You know, there's something that Alex said a while ago, the greater good. I remember, just like it was yesterday, after three months of court proceedings for the murder of my son, I remember the spirit of God began to speak to me, and He said, "I want you to forgive the three guys that murdered your son." And it was pounding in my spirit, in my mind, in my soul. And I remember asking my wife, and I'm sorry, I'll just, I'll be finished, in the living room of my home, I said, "Lily, I believe God wants us to forgive the three guys that murdered Sonny." And my wife didn't respond to me. She didn't say yes, no, huh, she just walked up the stairs. And the next morning, when we went about our business, she came to me, she said, "Blinkie, I'm in agreement with you." And it went over my head, I said, "In agreement," she says, "I'm in agreement with you to forgive the three guys that murdered Sonny." You see, there's something about when you're evenly yoked, there's something about when you come in unity, of strength, of one mind and one accord. And so what was that about? That was about how we then can live as people. The greater good, Alex, that you talked about, what is the greater good for the people? How much do we got to set aside? How much pride? How much ego? How much do we got to put to the side to meet the greatest need of all time in the year, 2007, that we're all faced with? And so that was my heart, that was my soul. She was my greatest cheerleader, she was my friend, my lover, she was my everything. But God's going to do better. The best is yet to come. Thank you. God bless you.
I'd like to ask Tana Ball to please come forward. There you are. Did you park your bike in the back?
Yes, sir.
This is my wife, Norma, she's going to present you with your flowers, your bouquet.
This is so appropriate, thank you. Thank you.
You know, as Blinkie Rodriguez just spoke of how people become leaders, because of circumstance, people become leaders because the best of them comes out. Today, we honor Tana Ball, who is a leader in her own right. She started by being a national cycling coach for the Olympic Training Center in Colorado Springs. And since then, for the last 16 years, she has touched the lives of many young people and adults throughout our country. But more importantly, for us Angelenos, she has spread that message of safety to our children. And I have children myself, and I know how hard it is to get them to wear their helmet. It's just, I guess they don't think it's cool or what have you, but I don't think it's cool for my children to lose their capacity to use their brain. And Tana knows as well as anybody in this country how important it is for us to train our children to be safe, to get them to understand that we're just trying to protect them, we want what's best for them. And Tana Ball, for 16 years, has been doing that job, and she does it like no one else. And that's why she's my Woman of the Year this year in 2007. And let me just give you some examples of some of the programs that she has spearheaded. And one of them is School Safe Traffic Zone Elementary Assemblies and rodeos, BLAST, that stands for Bike L.A. Safety Training, a hands-on bicycle skills course, parent traffic safety education, child restraint systems education, youth traffic safety classes, School Safe Traffic Zone Task Force, car seat inspection stations, Safety and Kids Traffic Summit. She founded a not-for-profit 501(c)(3) California corporation for youth education sports, Inc. And this is what she's been dedicating herself to for the last 16 years, saving lives. She's a professional, she's a wonderful human being, and she has found a way to give her heart and her soul into something that is actually making life better for so many thousands and eventually millions of people throughout our country. We are blessed to have her as one of, a member of the city of Los Angeles. So with that, I'd like to invite Tana Ball to please say a few words.
First off, I'd like to thank very much Councilman Cardenas. And I also want to say that I am so proud to stand here with other recipients of the Pioneer Women Award. They've all touched my heart. I look forward to hearing from others to speak. I agree with Blinkie, if you put a young person into a sport, you can change their life. You can give them direction, you can give them purpose, you can give them a chance to take their lives and make it something important beyond maybe what they've learned in the schools and beyond what they learn in their homes. It gives them a chance to succeed as an individual. I am very interested in trying to make our young people the best they can be out there, and I shall continue to do so. This award has a very special meaning to me. My dad was a pioneer. His family homesteaded in Wyoming, they had no electricity, no water, no plumbing, and yet he and his three brothers turned out to be outstanding scientists in the aerospace industry. I was taught from a very young age that anything you put your mind to, you can succeed. And that's the message that I put forth to all the young children out there, that anything they put their minds to, they can accomplish that. I dedicate this to my dad, who can, unfortunately, is not able to be here, my adopted dad's here, and my husband, for their strength and support through all the years. Thank you very much, and thank you again.
And with that, on behalf of the 7th council district, I present this certificate of tribute to you, Tana Ball, for all the wonderful work and the privilege you've given us to call us a friend. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
And a point of personal privilege, the two adult women in my life, my wife, Norma, is with me on this Pioneer Woman of the Year Awards Day, and also Vanessa. Vanessa here, I threatened her a couple of weeks ago that I bring her before council and tell people, since she graduated from college, she's looking for a job, but she found a job. So I didn't embarrass her today.
Why don't you bring her up, why don't you bring her up next to you so the people at home can see her?
Vanessa, where are you?
Where's she hiding?
This is Vanessa. She's now working. Thank you, Vanessa, for getting the job.
Vanessa, we all thank you. We don't have to give any more money to Tony. Our next presentation, Councilmember Hahn.
Mr. President, colleagues, you know, since I've been elected, every year on this day, we know that we have to choose a woman from our district to be our Pioneer Woman. And every year, we talk about it in my office a lot, and we come up with suggestions, and we ask staff members, who would be the best woman for our Pioneer Woman? This year, there was no discussion. This year, there was no hesitation. This year, I knew without a doubt who I wanted to honor as my Pioneer Woman of the Year. And I'm very pleased today to present Ms. Charlene Lovett as my Pioneer Woman of the Year. Charlene? Charlene is the mother of Cheryl Green, who was tragically killed just almost a week before Christmas last year. Cheryl was fourteen years old, and you've heard me talk about it. And it's actually become a story that all of Los Angeles has been talking about. In fact, the nation has been focused on this death of Cheryl Green. She was fourteen, she was standing on the corner in her Harbor Gateway neighborhood with a few of her girlfriends, three o'clock in the afternoon after school. She wasn't in the wrong place at the wrong time. She was right where she should have been, after school, in a neighborhood in Los Angeles, standing with her friends. But we know that her life was cut short tragically. It was tragic, it was senseless, and it broke her mother's heart, and it broke all of our hearts. And you know, no one would have blamed Charlene if she had given up. No one would have blamed her if she got in bed and never got up again. No one would have blamed her if she was angry and she had hate in her heart and she wanted somehow to retaliate against those who had taken Cheryl's life. But she didn't. Instead, miraculously, and with the power of God, Charlene became an activist for peace. Charlene stood up days after Cheryl was killed and pleaded with the neighborhood, pleaded with the gang members, pleaded with those who would have wanted to retaliate, and begged them to be peaceful, begged them to put this behind, begged them to get along. And she has been a beacon of hope in the Harbor Gateway neighborhood ever since. It was only weeks after the funeral of Cheryl that we walked door to door in that neighborhood. And I've never been in my life with such a brave woman. We knocked on doors, and mothers opened the doors, and kids opened the doors. And when she said, "Hi, I'm Charlene, and my daughter Cheryl was the one who was killed a few weeks ago," people would come out of their house to hug her. I will never forget standing there with a fourteen-year-old Latina, fourteen-year-old, the same age that Cheryl was. And we sat there and talked to her about what her dreams were, what she wanted to be when she grew up, full well knowing in her heart that her own daughter would never grow up and achieve the dreams that she also had. It was a moment I will personally never forget. Charlene is a mother of four, and she has become a community activist. She could have become helpless after the loss of Cheryl. Instead, she's joined the L.A. Humanity Group Foundation that came to her aid financially and spiritually during her time of loss. And she's working to establish a scholarship in memory of Cheryl, who wanted to be a pediatrician when she grew up. In January, I was honored to receive the Rosa Parks Award from the Southern Christian Leadership Conference. And I dedicated that award to Charlene because, like Rosa Parks, I feel like Charlene has made such a historic step forward in ending gang violence in our city. If everyone would use Charlene as their inspiration to stop the killing, to stop the violence, we would indeed rid Los Angeles of gang violence. And I know, colleagues, that Charlene is looking at us in the city of Los Angeles and looking at us to finally get our act together and, once and for all, come together with a strategic plan to end gang violence in Los Angeles. I've told her that we're gonna do it. I've told her that we're up to that task. I've told her that we've made mistakes in the past, but no longer. We're gonna come together, and we're gonna devise a plan that will, once and for all, prevent any more killings like that of Cheryl. So it is with great honor and great pride. I've never met a woman like you in my whole life, and I don't think I ever will. You have changed my life. In the midst of your pain and your grief, you have made me a better woman.
First, I would like to give all our honor, praise, and the glory to our Heavenly Father. Thank you, Father. I would like to, next, thanks Janice, Councilwoman Janice Hahn, and her staff for being by my side from the very first day that I've started my journey of this peace march that I am on. I hold in my hand the bow of the dress. My daughter was buried here. This is my baton right here. Every time you see me, you will see this. And I'm here for peace. I'll continue on in peace, and I would do everything in my power that God gives me to promote peace in the city and the county of Los Angeles.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, God.
Yeah, we're gonna take some pictures in the back. Yeah, oh, well, let's, yeah, let's go in the back. You know what? Let's skip this one, give me a little time.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Our next presentation, Council President Eric Garcetti.
It's my great pleasure to introduce to the City Council and to many Angelinos who know her, Jenny Lewis, our Pioneer Woman from the 13th Council District. As you know, the 13th Council District, and you just heard some of the music that comes from Jenny Lewis and her colleagues, but the 13th Council District has become one of the most creative cultural capitals in the country and in the world, a vibrant place where some of the leading music that's listened to throughout this nation and throughout the world comes from. We have here from Silver Lake today, the heart of 13th District, Jenny Lewis, who you may know as the voice of indie rock band Rilo Kiley, although she's also had a brilliant solo career as well. And one of the reasons this year I wanted to honor Jenny was not just for the contribution she's making to Los Angeles, but the fact at a time when we don't have many role models and inspirations to young women and to girls around this city, she stands as testament to what creativity is about and is an incredible positive role model for the next generation of girls and young women. When so many images of women in the media today that are targeting young women are sometimes negative, Jenny Lewis is a rock star who makes it cool to be strong. My office has been involved recently in dealing with the public outcry around billboards that you may have seen throughout this city for a movie called Captivity. And we need to be reminded that this is a city where people still put images of violence and degradation being done to women, and it's very important for young girls to have strong role models. And her work with Rilo Kiley, three albums, another to be released this summer, this summer, 2007, has won her international attention and acclaim, including accolades from heroes like Elvis Costello, dozens of magazine covers, and a touring support slot with Coldplay. And the release of her, uh, Coldplay, the release of her solo record, Rabbit Fur Coat, further secured Jenny's reputation as one of America's finest singer-songwriters. We are very honored to have her as a Silver Lake and CD-13 resident, and we're proud of the contribution that she makes every single day to men and women around the country. She also began her career as an actor, somebody who appeared in numerous television and film projects. And her creativity, which comes out in her music, and I'm sorry we only had a chance to play a little bit of the track, but I hope that you all get a chance to listen to more of her music and Rilo Kiley's music, really is something that speaks the voice of a new generation of young women. And for this reason, we're very proud to honor Jenny Lewis today, our Pioneer Woman from the 13th Council District. Please give her a round of applause.
I humbly accept this in the presence of all of the strong and wonderful women that are here today. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Mr. Zine, also known as Mr. Weisar today. He's gonna make the presentation for Mr. Weisar, and then we will go to Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. Holly Nito, Holly, come forward. Thank you. Unfortunately, Councilmember Jose Weisar from the 14th District isn't able to be here today, I'm standing in for him. On his behalf, I'm delighted to honor Pioneer Woman of the Year for the Council District 14, and that honoree is Holly Hollis Nito. She is known to her friends as a native Californian, has been a stakeholder in CD-14 since 1978, when she first joined Occidental College staff as administrative assistant, and later, when she moved her home from Alhambert Eagle Rock. Now, I don't know how you move a home, but that's what they have, you move your home. One brick at a time. In 1993, transferred to the Campus Safety Department at Occidental College, where she became the director in 1997, a position she holds to this date. Cites her time at Occidental College as an amazing journey that has lasted half my life. Also tremendously dedicated community volunteer, member of the California Federation of Women's Clubs since she was a young mother, served as president of three clubs, currently serves as president of the Women's 20th Century Club of Eagle Rock. Since 1993, been an active member and served on the Board of Directors of Blend Incorporated, that is Business for Law Enforcement, Northeast Division, a booster organization that provides support for the Northeast Division of the Los Angeles Police Department. In addition, her support for LAPD through Blend, been an active member of the LAPD's Community Police Advisory Board since 1997. This all blends in with your position as public safety at Occidental College. A family information, Pioneer Woman is very close to her family, two grown sons. She has two grown married children, two grown married children, Daniel and Kimberly, three grandchildren, William, Max, and Ashley. Am I correct on that? Okay, I wanna make sure that CD-14 staff put this all together as it's supposed to. And for her commitment, her energy, and her extraordinary contributions to her community, we honor Pioneer Woman of the Year, Holly. On behalf of my colleague Jose Weisar, we have the beautiful roses for you. Who's that man taking pictures? Who's the man taking pictures? Oh, Council District 14 taking pictures, all right. Well, now it's your turn for the microphone. There you go, Holly.
Thank you very much. I am honored to be in the company of such courageous, committed, and dedicated women who work every day in their community. Muhammad Ali said this, "Community service is the rent you pay for your space on earth." I intend to continue paying my rent every day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Parks. Mr. Parks will be followed by Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosenthal, Mr. Smith, Mr. Weiss, Wesson, and Zine.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, I'm honoring a person that, within her industry, is known as a giant in the city of Los Angeles and in the 8th and 9th District. She is the primary food provider as far as being not only the owner but CEO of Superior Markets. As you know, that many of the national brands and local brand stores have had an exodus out of certain communities in our city, and we are probably in the 8th and 9th District, the most underserved as far as having groceries or large grocery stores in the community. She has stepped into that void and began to create a grocery empire in this community. She, through the 8th District, has just recently opened a new store in 32nd Street in the USC complex. In addition to running these large businesses, she's also been unselfish in how she's trained her employees. She's developed a partnership with the L.A. Valley College, and as a result of this, she's trained over 1,200 individuals in helping them lead to greater promotional opportunities within her business. She also has developed scholarship programs where she has raised over $70,000 for scholarships for superior employees. She's also gone beyond that and begun to look at how she might help redevelop neighborhoods in and around her stores. The one thing that we can expect like clockwork, she calls once a year to tell us they're putting on their golf tournament, and she wants to know, "What schools are you gonna designate?" So she can give them a $10,000 stipend. She has raised over $1 million in dealing with that program alone, and I wanna tell you I wanna tell you the schools in the 8th District wait in line and say, "Please let us be the next one that you nominate," because she's helped Crenshaw High School, she's helped a variety of schools from Foché, Watts Charter School, a variety of schools have looked forward for that annual stipend. Through all of this innovation, she has time to work within the industry in that she's on the Board of Directors of the California Grocers Association, she's also Certified Grocers of California, and also on the Board of the United Western Grocers Incorporated. She currently serves as a member of the Coca-Cola Hispanic Advisory Council. She has done all those things, run a business, ensure that the community around her is taken care of, but we are most grateful for her in the sense of a Pioneer Woman, is that she has taken on a very tough job of providing well-served grocery stores in a community that is void of that service. And we're just so appreciative and wanted to honor today as our Pioneer Woman, Mimi Song.
It is a great pleasure and honor to receive this special award. I'd like to dedicate this award to my superior family, who made, not create yet, but I tried to be a great businesswoman, but who supported last 26 years with superiors. I'd like to say thank you to all my superior family, and thank you very much. I'm gonna be better and better, and last 26 years, my experience in a city has been nothing but great. I hope this award give me a great encouragement. I'm gonna be a better businesswoman. Thank you.
And Mr. Parks, you're going to do CD-9 as well, is that my understanding? You're gonna come back after this. Okay, Mr. Reyes for his special presentation.
Good morning, Buenos Aires. First, I want to thank everyone for their patience. I know this is a
I know this is a long morning, but I think it's a morning that speaks to the heart of the city. I've been privileged to work with many different folks in my past six years as a council member, and about, I'd say 12 years as a staff person. And much of what we do is about how we change our environment, our communities, for the sake of our children, for the sake of our families. And we witnessed this morning some tragedies, tragedies that have been converted to energy that brings hope. It talks about how communities come together to talk about how it is that their community is about our most precious participants, which is our seniors, our working folks, our children, how gangs have become that element that creates fear, doubt, sucks the life of other kids, indeed, takes them away from us. And so it's the small gestures and the big gestures that come together that make a difference. With me is Shirley Fierro, our Pioneer Woman for Council District 1. And I'm recognizing Shirley because as a 76-year young person, she's done more than folks half her age. She has done all the things that talk about how community should be respected. In Lincoln Heights, since I was a kid growing up there, we used to have two gangs. Now we have about five. But Shirley, in working with the neighborhood council, the chamber, the Broadway Task Force, has taken upon herself to send messages to everyone that Lincoln Heights is about a community of families. So on holidays, you'll see bows commemorating the different events, in Christmas, Halloween. She showed me some bows she put together for Easter, for spring, and it says that someone cares. It says that someone took the time, no matter how dirty the sidewalks, no matter how poor we feel or how down we are, when you see those trees decorated, when you see the improvements that incrementally starts making change, it's because we're telling the gang members, we're telling those drug dealers that they're not welcome here, that this is a family place. And she's done so much for our communities. Community garden on Gate Street, town hall meetings she's helped put together, working with my office. She has this incredible museum, the Fierros Villa Rafael Historic Landmark property on Parkside Avenue. This is a villa class that goes back to the 1920s, down the street from Lincoln Park. And Ralph, her husband, talks about when Lincoln Park was a zoo, when they had these 20, 30-foot elephants at gateways that allowed people to come through. They had an alligator farm, an ostrich farm, they had a carousel they were bringing back. And she's been working with her husband in trying to create that sense of identity, that sense of place that makes a difference for all of us. So Shirley, for your service to the community that has touched the lives of many residents, I want to thank you for your outstanding work and your tireless efforts in making Lincoln Heights a better place for our children, our seniors, indeed, our families, and sending that strong message that the gang violence, the drug addictions, all have to stop, and that we want a wholesome place for our children. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I want to thank all of you very much, and especially Ed, I want to thank you for this wonderful honor and privilege. I really appreciate it, and I want to especially thank my husband and my family for their love and their support. Without them, I couldn't do anything. And I know what it feels like to lose a child. My heart goes out to these families. Three years ago, we lost our oldest son, right at the prime of his life, so I know that feeling, but I feel when I lost him, I had this feeling that I had to do something that was worthwhile, and I thought this, to do something in the community, to help others, would really help me, and it really has helped me to keep my mind busy, be active in the community, and I really want to dedicate this award, this plaque, to my son Rick, because of him, that's why I'm here today, and I thank all of you so much with all my heart, and thank you, my husband Ralph.
I think Mr. Rosendahl, and Ms. Han was going to do Mr. Labonge's, so right after yours, Mr. Rosendahl? And Ms., you want to go first? Can we let Ms. Han go? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, and thank you, Ms. Han.
Our colleague Tom Labonge is not here today because he's on official business in France with our sister city Bordeaux, so he wanted to be here, but he asked me if I would do Joan Henenberger-Pickett. Oh, come here. So I'm very pleased. I'm very pleased to make this Pioneer Woman presentation for Councilmember Labonge, and again, I know he wanted to be here very much, but he asked me if I'd do it, and I was very pleased. Ms. Henenberger-Pickett has been an asset to the Larchmont Village Community in Tom's district ever since she founded and opened Pickett Fences, a hip women's clothing boutique on Larchmont Boulevard in 1994. One of my staff members, Courtney Chesla Torres, says it is really a great store. She shops there all the time. Joan and her family soon purchased and restored a historic home nearby. Her home was designed by famed Los Angeles architect David Whitmer, who designed the Pentagon, among other prominent commissions. Ms. Henenberger-Pickett also founded Petty Coats, which has been called lingerie for the girl next door. I like that. On Larchmont in 1995. And besides being a friendly, familiar face in Larchmont, Joan has served on the Board of Directors for the Larchmont Boulevard Association since 1996, most recently serving as the President for 2005 and 2006. And during her presidency, Joan raised money for and oversaw the installation of landscaped mini meetings, historic stop signs, and handicap access crosswalks in the Larchmont Shopping Village. The crosswalks have improved pedestrian safety and traffic flow in Larchmont while beautifying the streetscape. A wife and mother, Joan has been named a Woman of Larchmont and won other honors related to her community work. She serves on the Parent Board of Directors of St. Brendan's School, where her son Wiley is a student. She's a member of the Wilshire Ebel Club, the Windsor Square Hancock Park Historical Society, and the Brookside Homeowners Association. For her great service to her community, we honor Joan Henenberger-Pickett as the Council District 4 2007 Pioneer Woman of the Year, and it gives me great pleasure to present you with these gorgeous flowers and add my bit of congratulations to a wonderful woman who, I think with some of your traffic improvements, you have saved lives, which is something we're all grateful for. So thank you to Tom and his staff for selecting me, and I'm proud to represent Council District 4. Thank you. Here, let's...
Thank you, Ms. Han, and I have shopped also at that store in Larchmont, so it's fabulous store, for those of you who've not been there. Excuse me. Now I'd like to recognize Mr. Rosendahl, and then Mr. Parks will follow Mr. Rosendahl for Ms. Perry, and then Mr. Smith.
This morning, I just gave my honoree half a dozen eggs, as well as the, as well as some lovely flowers. Maritza Prescott, who is my Woman of the Year, is exactly what we've been hearing other Women of the Year saying, a person who wants to give back to community and make a difference. And when you give back, you're actually giving more to yourself than you can imagine. She's been a community leader and a public servant, countless community projects and proposals and initiatives. Maritza has worked diligently to not only improve the quality of life within her neighborhood and direct community, but also the entire city of Los Angeles. Maritza has lived in Los Angeles since her immigration from El Salvador in 1977. Over 40% of us are immigrants from all over the planet that has truly enriched our great city. She's a dedicated volunteer toward education, planning, and land use issues. She has served as a member of several community organizations, most recently the Mar Vista Community Council. As a founding member of the council and as Chair of the Council's Urban Planning and Land Use Committee, Maritza facilitated community meetings reviewing environmental and planning issues for commercial and residential projects affecting the Mar Vista community, which is my community, and that's how I got to know Maritza, as she was volunteering in the community. She's been involved of a lot of other things, but she helped form the Citywide Alliance of Neighborhood Councils and as a representative of the Collaborative Learning Project at the University of Southern California. Recently, Maritza decided that she wanted to contribute to the city in a different way. She wanted to work within the city in order to improve the quality of life within Los Angeles. She applied for a job with the city's planning department, and she got it. This position has given her the opportunity to make a difference, in her own words, one project at a time. With over 25 years of professional and volunteer experience in the areas of architecture, urban design, and transportation planning, and community affairs, Maritza is truly a treasure for the 11th District. She's a phenomenal woman. She has dedicated her life to improving not only her neighborhood, but the entire city. She is joined by her mother Gloria. Where are you, Mom? There she is. Her sons Ian and Clayton. Come on up, a little closer. And Ian's girlfriend Lisa. And I might say there's some community folks. Come on up, folks, real quick. Also joining is Gail Goldberg, the head of the Planning Department, Nancy Howell, Bob Fitzpatrick, and Tom Ponton. We love you, and congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilman Rosendahl, and also to the Commission and Status of Woman for this great honor. It is a wonderful day when you can bring your professional skills, your passion for your community, and service in the Planning Department together all in one. I have great mentors and great leaders that have guided me to where I am right now, and I am so proud to be part of this new family, the Planning Department, under the leadership of Gail Goldberg. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam President. On behalf of Jan Perry in the 9th District, we're going to honor today as Pioneer Woman is Kathy McAdaney, and she's an LA police officer who I had the pleasure of working with for a number of years. She is the mainstay in working at the Skid Row area and dealing with the crime problems and all of the homelessness in the area. She's a senior lead officer. I had the pleasure of being with her in 1999. She was the Officer of the Year at Central Area and also the Officer of the Year for Central Bureau, and that is quite a commendation for someone as a field officer. In between most of her field assignments, she took a little time off and went and worked narcotics to expand her experience. When I say time off, I don't mean time off, I mean that she went to work something other than patrol. But she also continued to work in the field. She's earned numerous awards in the department. She was the recipient of the DNC ribbon right after the successful policing of the Democratic National Convention. She also won a department award as the Crystal Angel Award in 2006, so that last year, which is part of the Police Foundation annual event. She is basically working in one of the most challenging divisions and challenging assignments in the city of LA. She, on a daily basis, goes out and not only risks her safety, but also her health, because she's dealing with a number of issues that most officers are not addressing in the sense of the high rate of disease that is currently evident in our Skid Row area. She also, member of the military, she served in Iraq, and she also continues to support soldiers and veterans upon their return home. She recently... Last year, in fact, she organized a toy drive for families of injured soldiers returning from the current engagement. There's basically few people, as Jan Perry sees it in her district, that would be more worthy of this award. Kathy is a true pioneer. She works in not only a career that many people find dangerous, and when I say dangerous, it's one of the few jobs you have that you actually have to put on a bulletproof vest to go to work, and so that gives you an idea of what the potentials are. And I would just like, and it's an honor to me that Jan asked me to present the Pioneer Award to Kathy McAdaney. Now, bear with me, Kathy. Kathy did not want to speak, but I'm going to impose on her just to say a couple of words, because as senior lead officer, you know she speaks all day long, so we know she can speak. So let me just ask you to make a couple of comments.
Yes, sir. I just want to say thank you very much to the Commission, as well as to Councilwoman Jan Perry and her awesome staff. It is a privilege to serve the citizens in the Skid Row and Central Division area, and it is also a privilege to continue to work and serve in CD 9. And on behalf of all the awesome women on the department that have gone before me, I humbly accept this award. Thank you.
And the final award, which is the greatest, Kathy's with child and will be working up until almost the day, and then we'll be back to work, but I want to congratulate you on that also.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Smith will be followed by Mr. Weiss, Mr. Wesson, and then Mr. Zine.
I'm delighted to be here today to recognize a woman who I've known for about 20 years, and who came to us in this North San Fernando Valley in a very unique problem we have, and she's turned out to be a tremendous community builder. We had an area known, back in the day, it was known as either the Shooting Gallery or the Drug Store. It was an area of North Ridge, about four square blocks, about 62 apartment buildings with about 50, some a lot of different owners. Crime was rampant in the area. It was the highest crime rate and fastest growing crime rate in the San Fernando Valley, and we wanted to do something about it. We met Lorraine New at that time, and head of, and President and managing partner of our organization called Newbar Management Services, came in and with the city of Los Angeles, put together the ownership of all those 62 units under one management company instead of 50-something different, and began to attack the problem. She created a community family center at the area of Park Parthenia, which is now known as Park Parthenia, converted some of the apartments into classrooms and office space to provide social programs, education, medical programs for families. They include junior neighborhood watch to work with our LAPD there, a Spanish-speaking neighborhood watch to work with our police officers, and English as a second language program, an after-school homework assistance program, and a computer center. She brought in employment assistance, child guidance programs, and... She brought in employment assistance, child guidance programs, and really important over there was a Crisis and Domestic Violence Center. Working with the people there, we took an area that had some three thousand five hundred people living in four hundred and fifty apartments. And I went in there at one time and looked at what was in there, and we saw twenty people living in two-bedroom apartments on floors that were covered with mattresses, plumbing that didn't work, roaches and rats, and just the terrible infestation that went on there. And she turned it into an area we now call Park Parthenia. Where the crime rate once was four hundred and fifty drug arrests a year in four square blocks, it is now virtually none. Where it was once six murders going on a year in these four square blocks, the highest murder rate in a small concentrated area in the San Fernando Valley, there are none. And she truly cleaned up that area. The more important, she took her expertise citywide, not just in North Ridge, as she helped us with a really bad problem. She chaired the Los Angeles Housing Department's Housing Crisis Task Force Subcommittee on Rental Housing, and also the Los Angeles Citizens Blue Ribbon Committee on Slum Housing, which helped the city of L.A. create a new program called the Systematic Code Enforcement Program, which is now going out throughout the city to make sure we don't have these problems continue, that we clean up our slum lords, that we clean up our apartment units, and make the L.A. truly a great place for all people to live of all income levels. She didn't just stop there. She takes her expertise in the community and works with many programs. Most recently, and most notably, something that I welcomed here a few weeks ago, is when we noticed that, as president of the PALS organization, LAPD Devonshire Division Police Activity League, she, in the last three years, has put together a group of people that has raised $2.5 million to build a new PALS center for Devonshire Division, five thousand square feet for disadvantaged at-risk youth to get off the street, get out of gangs, and become productive members of our community. She's been recognized as our community as a Citizen of the Year by the Chamber of Commerce. She received a Life Saving Award, another Chamber of Commerce Award, and received the L.A. County Lights Out Award in 1996 for working with the police department. She is truly a blessed person in our disadvantaged community. She is really loved by the police department and all the committee for cleaning up a really bad social problem and doing it in a compassionate way. I am very proud to call Lorraine New my friend. I am very proud to say the people of the Twelfth District are recognizing her today for her accomplishments and her caring and concern for the people of need in our community and recognizing her as our Pioneer Woman of the Year. Congratulations, Lorraine.
Thank you very much, Councilman Smith. I want to thank the council itself and also the Commission on Women. The task of turning our neighborhoods around is a daunting task, but it cannot be accomplished alone. You must have a staff, a dedicated staff, and you must have the city, the councilman, Councilman Smith, and previously Councilman Burnson, who was an innovator in putting this program together. And above all, we need the Los Angeles Police Department. With all of them, along with my staff, these accomplishments have been made, not singly. Thank you very much for this distinguished honor.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Madam President and members. If I could ask my Woman of the Year and some of the community people that have come down with her today to come forward. I think my mother's somewhere. Here she comes. Anyway, the first thing that I want to do to Ms. Geneva Cox, who is my Pioneer Woman of the Year, is to apologize. Apologize that my last name begins with a W. If I was Herb A., you'd be out of here at home right now, so maybe next year I'll change my name. But I'm truly proud of the male role models that I've had in my life. But I wouldn't be the man that I am today if it wasn't for the women in my life. To acknowledge my mother and all that she's done for me for so many years, my biggest fan, my wife of twenty-six years, Fabian Supervisor Yvonne Burke, and also a lady who I met at the beginning of my political career that set me straight and set me on the proper course, and I've never told her this before, and that's Ms. Geneva Cox, who I honor today. Now, I could talk to you about all of the phenomenal things that she has done in our community, but I won't do that today. I want to put a different slant on this. I met her twenty years ago. A lot of people don't know that when Councilman Nate Holden, who was my first boss in politics, ran for elective office, he ran against twelve other candidates. Ms. Cox was one of these candidates. Now, all of the political pundits and the political operators and the political Weisenheimer said that this woman, myself included, did not have a chance, that she had little money, and she would not be able to get her message to the people. But on election night, I was amazed when she almost came in second. She came in third, and it mystified me. We, Nate Holden, were fortunate, because Geneva Cox decided to endorse us, and that's when I learned her secret, and that's when I became the political individual that I am today. She had a group of people, some of which are standing behind me today, called Cox's Army. And Cox's Army, and I'm like, what the heck is a Cox's Army? She took me to a meeting with them, where I had never seen so many volunteers in my life. And I said to her, how could you get so many people to follow you? Well, she was the chief field deputy for then-Councilman Dave Cunningham, and she taught me, and these are rules that I live by today. She taught me to put the constituents first. She taught me that things that I may view as little things are big things for other people. And she taught me the importance of good housekeeping, taking care of my district, the district. And she taught me to be humble, and she taught me to be a man of the people. And she also talked me into coming to the district office once a week to meet with anybody that wanted to come in. And Geneva, today, I'm in the district office on Mondays and Thursdays, and I meet with anybody who comes in, a lesson that I learned from you. So it is with great honor, ladies and gentlemen, that I present to you a person that I think set me on the right course, where if you see me out in the street and people say, "Councilman," I look them in the eye and I say, "Call me Herb." It's because of the lady to my left. Ladies and gentlemen, Geneva Cox, a great pioneer. And Geneva, I have a bouquet of flowers that is bigger than you and me, so I'm going to ask your daughter, Giulio, your son, in fact, your son Michael's here. I'm going to make him carry this. But do you want to say a few words? Here, Michael.
I would like to say thanks to Councilman Herb Wesson and the Commission on the Status of Women. And Shandra, I want to say thanks for listening to me when I was calling, because I had forgotten, it's been so long since I've been here, I have forgotten how to orbit in city halls.
You ain't missing nothing.
But I want to say, first, I have to thank God for his many blessings and the things that I remembered as a young girl growing up, and I've used this statement before. Give of the best to your master. Give of the strength of your youth. Throw your soul's all-glowing order into the battle for truth. And some of these people standing back here, including my family and my friends of many years, we call ourselves the Tom Bradley Era, because we learned a lot for us. And our Tenth District Women had its first meeting here in the City Hall. That's when people learned how to use City Hall. And so I'm not going to talk anymore, because I know you're tired and worn out, but I just want to say thanks, thanks, thanks.
Okay, Cox's Army, follow me this way. We'll get her first.
Thank you. And for our last Pioneer Woman today, Mr. Zine.
Helen Madrid Worthen. Come forward, please. I hope you didn't fall asleep back there with Ken.
No, I was congratulating someone that really inspired me.
Well, you inspire a lot of people. We went by the horseshoe, and you can see what happens when your last name is Zine. You're at the end of the horseshoe.
Right. I'm a W.
Either way, it would have been. Okay. And then Herb Wesson wants to change his last name. He wants to call Uncle Tanuse, so it will be T. instead of W. So that's an inside joke with my colleague Herb Wesson. I have so much information on you. Where's your husband? There's Ken. Come on in. I want people to see you, former Fernando recipient, Ken Worthen. I want people to see you at home. There you are. They should see you at home. And I want to thank the Commission on Status of Women for bringing this about. We were upstairs in the tower for breakfast this morning, and this is the month to honor Pioneer Women. Pioneer Women were developed in 1988, and this program's been going since 1988. And my recipient today, Helen, and we named the Madrid Theater after you. I don't know if you know that or not.
I know that.
Madrid Theater in Canoga Park. Helen exemplifies extraordinary strength, resolve, and determination. Those are qualities that make her Pioneer Woman for the Third District. Helen Madrid Worthen is a native Angelino, who has lived over fifty-five years in Los Angeles. She is a product of the L.A. Area Schools. Now, I want to emphasize, lived over fifty-five years in Los Angeles. We're not saying your age, but that you've lived here over fifty-five years.
I've been away.
I know.
In addition to...
I know, I know. After a thirty-one-year career with the gas company, raising two sons, being a stepmother to four young adults, in retirement, she enjoys activities that help improve our city and the San Fernando Valley. Served for eight years, city's cultural heritage commission sat on the board of Los Angeles Conservancy, as well as on various nonprofit boards. Currently a board member of the Protected Abario, one of the premier nonprofit organizations in San Fernando Valley, offering healthcare services, youth school-to-career programs, and a five-star work source center in Sun Valley. And I saw you there during the rain, when they had the holiday program. Two thousand, the year 2000, California Assembly Speaker Bob Hertzberg selected you as the Fortieth District Woman of the Year. In 2006, you were selected by the National Women's Political Caucus, San Fernando Valley, for their inaugural issue of the Women's History Calendar, eleven remarkable women, and one good guy. Are you the good guy?
No.
Okay. I know, eleven women and one good guy. Probably a lucky guy. For over thirteen years, volunteered in the Grandparents and Books, GAB, program for the city of Los Angeles Library System, bilingual reader at the Canoga Park Ranch Library in the west San Fernando Valley, where she shares her love of books with children, who often are just getting acquainted with a confusing new country and need help with the English language. Lived in Mexico between the ages of two and twelve years. As she knows firsthand what it is to learn English at a young age, she tells these children that no matter how difficult the new language is, they will be so much more valuable once they learn the new language and can speak a second language well. Also tells them, with a book, you're never lonely, and life can be full of exciting adventures, no matter your circumstances. Another joy in retirement has been for intercultural, interfaith, mostly Judeo-Christian activities. One of the founding members of the Hispanic Jewish Women's Task Force serves as its program chair. Also been a Catholic co-chair of the Stirling Committee for the Catholic Jewish Women's Annual Conference for the last two years. And I've met you at the Jewish...
Task Force meeting.
The Hispanic Jewish Task Force.
Right.
And also at St. Bernardine's, where you attend services. So you are all over the map.
Where I'm an usher.
You are an usher, that's true, because I go to services there. Life has many twists and turns. One never anticipates. In March 1988, Helen's son, Eric Reiner, a career firefighter, paramedic with the city of Los Angeles Fire Department, died in a helicopter crash while airlifting a young girl who had been seriously injured in an auto accident. The three paramedics and the young girl they were transporting died when the helicopter crashed in Griffith Park, and that was in 1988. I still recall that.
Nineteen ninety-eight.
Nineteen ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-eight. As a result of this tragedy, he became involved with the National Fallen Firefighters Foundation, whose mission is to honor the fallen firefighters and give care and support to the families they leave behind. As a member of the foundation's fire service survivors network, he reached out to newly bereaving parents throughout the year all over the United States, and participates in training workshops to regional fire departments. Also, co-facilitates mothers' small groups during the foundation's annual memorial weekend in Maryland, represents the foundation at local, state, and national fire service meetings as needed. For the last six years, been a facilitator for faith-based grief support groups in various San Fernando Valley Catholic parishes, together with your wonderful husband, Ken. Recipient of San Fernando's most prestigious Fernando Award in 1992, they are proud grandparents. I couldn't understand this, almost ten grandchildren. How do you get almost ten?
My tenth grandchild was born last week. I wrote that about a month ago.
Okay, so you now have ten grandchildren. I couldn't understand it, almost ten. I figured there was something along that line there. Truly been announced to the third council district and the city as a whole, and to be commended for your tireless efforts to improve the quality of life for all who live there. I must admit and add that during the search for the Pioneer Woman for the Third District, they gave me different names of people in the community, and I said, "No, they don't really measure up." "No, they don't measure up." And then I said, "Wait a second." Then your name came up. I said, "Nah, that's the one." And looking at the information that you've been involved in, and I know personally, some of the activities, I didn't know to this great extent, but you are truly the Pioneer Woman with your wonderful husband, Ken, which you folks do for the San Fernando, to bring people together and all the activities you've been involved with. So we have the lovely bouquet, the lovely certificate of tribute from the city of Los Angeles, and we want to acknowledge and congratulate you. I know it's at the end of the program, but you have as much time as you want at the microphone, because we save the best for last. Helen.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm in awe of the company I'm with today. Not just the women, but I'm blessed to have my wonderful husband that's supported me always and been a role model for me. But, oh, listening to Charlene and her broken mother's heart, I well remember how I felt in those first months, those first years. And all I can say is that when tragedy strikes, you have a choice. It can make you or break you. You can choose to carry on the memory of your loved one, for me, my son, and for, like, Blinky Rodriguez, his beloved wife's memory. You carry that memory forward, and you share it, and you use it as an inspiration to make this world better. Everyone here, we could hear all that they've contributed to their community. Each of us is somehow paying it forward, and all of us working together will make this city of Los Angeles the shining gem for the United States that it is. It is my honor and I thank, to be here. I thank you, and I hope I represent not just the San Fernando Valley, but I am an Angelino. From the bottom of my heart, I love this city. I remember when we were deciding whether San Fernando was going to secede.
Succeed.
Yeah. I said at the time, if that were to happen, I was moving, because I'm not just the Valleyite. I'm an Angelino, and I love all of this city. And again, thank you very much. All right. Thank you.
We'll be back to do the next presentation. Well, you want to do it right now? I guess we're going to do it right now?
I think we were, actually, we were going to. We have some people dignitaries for them, Monsignor Romero, so if we could go to them first, and we'll come back to you.
Okay, we'll do photos and come back, because we've got the cherry blossom festival.
Yes. We'll be after that, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be after that, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Reyes for our next presentation.
In this great city, we have such diversity, and we have benefited from a strong presence of the Salvadorian community in many facets of their work and their efforts. And today, we are here to honor a couple of organizations. But I'd like to invite those who are involved in the Monsignor Romero presentation to join We have a certificate that honors Monsignor Romero and the Salvadorian people for their spirit, their fight, their goal in creating a type of community that allows their families to continue to flourish, to engage every aspect of our society, and indeed, they have done that. I've witnessed this great community mature since the early 80s to today, where they're business owners, property owners. They have created a strong relationship with their mother country, Salvador. They've created programs for youth, job training, education, the whole range of benefits. But it stems from the spirit that Monsignor Romero had instilled in his struggle for justice. We wanted to present this certificate to Dr. Maria Julia Hernandez. She was the Director of their legal, uh-
Human rights.
Human rights for the Archdiocese, and I understand she passed away-
This morning.
This morning. So in her honor, we want to present the certificate and allow for the leadership to speak to us. And I want to acknowledge all the dignitaries that are here with us today, the folks who work with us and with the San Salvador Sister City Committee. And again, it is through their strong effort that we're able to appreciate this great diversity we have in this city, but more importantly, to talk about the struggles we still need to endure and the accomplishments that we like to see come to fruition. So with that, I'd like to provide this justice from Monsignor Oscar Romero and the Salvadorian people, signed by all of you, my colleagues, thank you so much, by our city clerk, indeed, our mayor, Antonio Varegosa. And without further ado, I'd like to ask Carlos to introduce or acknowledge all our dignitaries that were here with us this morning. Thank you.
And Mr. Reyes, before Carlos Vacarana speaks, I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Garcetti for a few remarks before we ask Carlos to speak. Mr. Garcetti.
I want to thank you very much to, uh, to Councilmember Reyes, who is, uh, I know, our honorary Central American Councilmember and a very proud member of the Latino Caucus with the others, but thank you, Councilmember Reyes, for your leadership. If you represent the, the heart of the Central American community, many of us represent the limbs of it, because the Central American community is a body that is all around Los Angeles and is at the core of our success. And when we look all the way up from Panama and, now, see, I have to name every country or else I'll get in trouble. From Panama and Honduras and Nicaragua and El Salvador and Guatemala and Costa Rica and Belize, we'll throw in what the hell, and the rest of the Caribbean. We, we see communities that have contributed to the well-being of, of this, uh, the city and also of this country, and one in which the political power of this community too has grown and grown. And I know many staffers here in City Hall are Central American. I have three, four employees that trace their Central American heritage to El Salvador and Guatemala and to Nicaragua in my, in my case. It's one of the great joys of my life, and I know, uh, Councilmember Reyes, it was the same when we went down to El Salvador and created this twinning of San Salvador and Los Angeles to commemorate not only what had been there, but I often tell the story when I was with Carlos and others there, when we went into the museum that's in San Salvador and we saw the adjourning motions from this very same city council, different council members, but from this city council that are there in the museum for when the nuns that were killed, uh, that we adjourned in memory. And the way that this became a place of refuge for so many people changed not only the face of those countries and in El Salvador in particular, but changed the face of this city. And the great man who we commemorate, Oscar Romero, I want to thank Councilmember Reyes, who joined with me and the mayor to allow Clinica Oscar Romero to finally purchase, um, the land that they have been on, $1.5 million of city funds that went to do that. So thank you, Councilmember Reyes, for achieving that as well. And so, thank you all for coming. Gracias por venir y su liderazgo también. And thank you to the Consuls General that are here, standing strong together from throughout Central America, and thank you for your leadership too, Councilmember Reyes.
Thank you, Eric. I'll quit as usual. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Vacarana.
Mr. President, members of the council, Councilmember Reyes, thank you very much for this opportunity. On behalf of Los Angeles, San Salvador Sister City Committee and its members, organizations that have been able to, uh, put together this event this morning, Caresen, Clinica Monsignor Romero, the Central American Studies Program, uh, Cisán, Salif, Comité de Salvadorinos and at Orbera Church, Comunidades, and other, uh, members of the Salvadoran community, I want to thank you for this opportunity, uh, and especially to recognize a great man. Today, uh, we are here to celebrate, uh, and to commemorate the life of Monsignor Romero. We went to El Salvador last week. I took a delegation on behalf of the Sister City, uh, Committee, uh, and we went to visit, uh, this, the Monsignor Romero tomb at, at the National Cathedral. And I can tell you that, uh, when we were there, uh, we remember those sad days of the 1980s, uh, when thousands of people were killed by the military. We cannot, we forget, we can forgive, but we cannot forget what happened in the 80s and 90s. Uh, and there is a woman, and actually, two great women, who has, who have passed away in the last three weeks. We just got a very sad news this morning that Dr. Maria Julia Hernandez, who was the champion in advocating for the Monsignor Romero killing, to bring those responsible to justice. She died this morning. So we want to honor Maria Julia Hernandez, who came two, three years ago at Salif Bank. We honor Maria Julia. And I want to share with you that, uh, it's very sad, because I was taking the, the award that, that the city council and the, and the mayor presented to her three years ago when she came to city council. And I was taking that award, uh, in this trip, and I wasn't able to, to reach it because she was ill. So in, in honor of Maria Julia Hernandez, we are here to, uh, remember also Monsignor Romero, with the hope that there will be justice in El Salvador, that sometime, hopefully soon, there will be justice in El Salvador. So again, thank you very much, and I'd like to invite, uh, Dr. Eduardo Gonzalez and Aquiles Magaña and others to say a few words on behalf of the organization. Thank you very much again.
My name is Eduardo Gonzalez, and I'm the Executive Director of Clinica Monsignor Oscar Romero, and I'm very pleased to be here this morning. I'd like to thank both the city council members, as well as the mayor of Los Angeles, for this resolution. It is really important and significant. And yes, justice sometimes takes a long time, but sooner or later, justice will be made on the case of Monsignor Romero. And most importantly, I think, the fact that this thriving organization represented here today are conducting the legacy of Monsignor Romero is, in my opinion, the best testament of our work and homage to Monsignor Romero. And I also want to take this opportunity to officially thank, uh, the city council, particularly, uh, Councilman Garcetti, Reyes, and mayor of Los Angeles, for the recent approval of a grant, uh, for Clinica Romero to purchase our own building, our own home, so our patients and our community will have, um, a place they can call their medical home. So on behalf of our board of directors, our staff, and our patients, we want to say thank you from the bottom of our heart. Muchas gracias.
I'd like to also recognize the members of the, uh, Council Generals from Honduras, I believe, Nicaragua and, and Guatemala are here, and also an organization that has done a great job for the past 25 years, El Rescate. To congratulate you for the, your, uh, job for the last 25 years. Aquiles Magaña, please.
I'm Aquiles Magaña from Caresen. We're here to, uh, receive this, uh, recognition, uh, for Monsignor Romero. Romero was a visionary, he was a prophet, and a man of action. So we are trying to follow that example in being the, the voice of the immigrant community, not only of, uh, Salvadoran immigrants, but the immigrant, the undocumented population that lives in our neighborhoods. We are envisioning a better world, a better society for them, and we are taking the necessary actions, uh, among organizations, community organizations, politicians, and philanthropists in order to, to make this world a better place for everybody.
And finally, I'd like to, uh, just mention a couple of good news, which I, I, I want to share. One is that not every, not everything is negative. YPI, uh, which is our local organization, among with other organizations, Salif, Clinica Monsignor Romero, is working to, uh, open a charter school in memory of Monsignor Romero. It would be the Monsignor Romero Charter School in Pico Union area. So I want to recognize that. And also, the Central American Corps already initiated an effort to name Pico Union, uh, Westlake, Macartup Park, uh, the, uh, area where we want to do, uh, a, a lot of work in cultural, so we want to name that play the, the cultural, uh, uh, Central American cultural place for Central Americans, and we will invite everybody to join, and hopefully the, the council will support us. Thank you very much again.
Gracias. One more presentation with El Rescate.
I was just gonna say, Mr. Reyes has one more presentation, then, uh, will follow by Mr. Zine.
There is another organization that has done tremendous work in the, for the Salvadorian community, El Rescate. They're celebrating their 25th anniversary. We have our special guests, they've been mentioned before, but I'd like to invite them to join me. We have our Honorable Milton Alvarez, our General Counsel of Guatemala, the Honorable José Rodolfo García Escibell, General Counsel of Salvador, and the Honorable Vivian Panting, our General Counsel of Honduras. Also, we have Honorable Dr. Carlos Carión Coronel, General Counsel of Nicaragua. Muchas gracias por su presencia. Bienvenidos a Los Ángeles. Vemos que hoy día hemos tenido mucha actividad, pero agradezco la presencia, la presencia de ustedes en poder celebrar los 25 años de El Rescate. The 25th, uh, the 25th anniversary is significant. Can we talk about this inception of this organization back in 1981? El Rescate has helped more than 250,000 families, helped build their lives here in Los Angeles. In particular, in my district, they opened up and created the first credit unions in Pico Union. They've been able to establish clinical services, legal services, social services to immigrant communities and families. And for those of us who are not familiar, what this means for children and families, in many ways, when you talk about this sub-economy, when you talk about what those who are ruthless, those gang members, who prey upon the fear of those who are not informed, who do not understand their rights, there's large, huge levels of abuse. And it's El Rescate that's there to provide some light, some relief, especially to those who are being abused by those who will take advantage of them because of the lack of the language, the understanding of the culture, and our society in general. So it is with great pleasure that this resolution is being given to El Rescate for the 25th, 25th anniversary, and to the Consulados who are here with us today to help celebrate the significant, significant accomplishment of 25 years in the anniversary. Muchas gracias.
Good morning, Mr. President, the honorable members of the city council, the honorable Council Generals of Central America that are visiting with us today, members of the Board of Directors, members of the staff, invited guests, and dear friends of El Rescate. It is with great honor and pride that we accept the council's resolution on this historical day, on the occasion of celebrating our first quarter of century of dedicated work for our community. During these past 26 years, we have served more than 250,000 families, not only in Southern California, but as well in other regions of this great nation, providing them with critically needed social, medical, economic, and legal services. Some of our past programs have counted with the support of the government of the City of Los Angeles, and this is the right time to thank many of you elected officials for your support. As we embark in our next 25 years, we want to focus our work on the pressing needs of our community. A comprehensive immigration reform that unifies families, comeback, human traffic, and the causes of migration in the nations of origin. To solve the needs of affordable housing for our working families, to promote citizenship and voter registration, and to continue our defense of human rights, especially for the disenfranchised. In a nutshell, to center our energies in the empowerment of the little guys, our community. This is an integral part of the American quilt experience. Again, we want to express our thanks to the honorable members of this council for extending this recognition to our organization. We want to thank Councilman Reyes for your support and for his continued support to our community. We want also to thank the new council member, Richard Alarcón. Welcome him to the city council, and we want to invite you tonight to join us at our party at 7:00 PM. Bring your dancing shoes. Isabel Cardenas will speak.
Good afternoon, everybody. I think most of you know me, and also know that next year I will be 70 years old. And because I am 70 years old and have been in this country since I was eight, I know the history of El Rescate and many things that many of the people who have been working today do not know. I wish to, uh, let everybody know that had it not been for the American people, for attorneys, immigration attorneys, for leaders in the religious community, El Rescate would have never have been founded. Uh, everyone knows that the church is very powerful in itself, but when an alliance is made of many churches, there's nothing they cannot accomplish. And in the 1980s, with the financial support of CITCA, Southern California Interface Task Force in Central America, El Rescate opened its doors in May 1, 1981. And the beauty of it was, and the biggest highlight that I get about El Rescate, is that in 1982, it freed a group of refugees that had declared themselves on a hunger strike, because one of their compañeros, Santana Chirinoamaya, was sent back to El Salvador and two hours later was found decapitated in a nearby village of San Salvador. The leaders of this hunger strike were rescued from the migra, and to me, it is the sweetest remembrance I have. They then became the Santana Chirinoamaya Refugee Committee. And although El Rescate originally was founded by religious- And although El Rescate originally was founded by religious people, attorneys, a lot of us who had been here for years, after the Santana Chirinoamaya was founded, we sort of said, "We're going to now become independent." And so, they dragged me over to then found El Rescate on its own by the Santana Chirinoamaya Refugee Committee. And I've got to tell you that I was so happy to see Eduardo González here today, because people must know that El Rescate, with the Santana Chirinoamaya Refugee Committee, a doctor among them, were the ones that wrote, designed the Clinica Monsignor Romero. And I think that all of these accomplishments are wonderful, and I thank the Lord that the Clinica is now going to get all that support. Thank you so much.
Hello. My name is Francisco Rivera, and I am the president of the Board of Directors of El Rescate, and I want to set some records straight. First of all, I want to salute Councilmember Herwesson, in which district there is the largest concentration of Central American registered voters. And also, I am so proud, you know, that I have worked in the campaign on Mr. Jack Weiss. I worked for that man so many kilometers, and he is sitting there, and I am so proud that I did work in his campaign. Also, I put a lot of time in helping elect this man right here, and that is also that I feel very proud. And we have helped friends, you know, in the San Fernando Valley with Tony, you know, and Richard, our friends helping you there too. So, we have been with you guys. So, that's why we are so proud at this moment, and it's time that the city of Los Angeles does acknowledge, you know, who really the Central American community is. And also, I want to say, set the record straight about the historical Central America town. We presented the resolution to Councilmember Reyes on January 30 of 2003. So, we were the ones, you know, and we want to do it with all the community, and I want to thank you, the presence of the General Counsel of Honduras, of Guatemala, of Nicaragua, for your support, and we're going to have the historical Central America town with all of you and all of us and all of the Central American community. And so, I just wanted to say that, and we're going to be working together, and also, we have the Plaza Morazán that is pending also, and we're going to get back to you and expect all your help in the Mayor Antonio Villarreal's support too. So, thank you so much for a great day today.
Thank you, Francisco. And I do want to say that a lot of this work, the heavy lifting occurred in the late 80s, early 90s, and I want to recognize then Councilman Mike Hernandez for his strong support back then. So, thank you, Mike. Thank you so much, and thank you for your time, and again, thank you for your patience.
Now, we'd like to recognize Councilmember Dennis Zine for our last presentation. And while we're waiting, we have a request to take item 70, just out of order real quick. There's no public comment cards on that, so we'll open and close public hearing. Want to make sure that... Is that the Olympic item, Madam Clerk?
My glasses.
Item 70? No, it's not. Okay, I'm sorry. Let's get the number... Why don't you go ahead, Mr. Zine, and we'll take that up in a second.
I got it.
Go ahead, Mr. Zine.
I will, as soon as I get my glasses, I'm going to read. Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know what happened, how they ended up over there, but... Is this the last presentation today, Mr. President? Let's hear it for the last presentation of the day. To all your listeners at home, it's now 12:15. Cherry Blossom Festival, Southern California. Today, it's my pleasure that I stand here on behalf of my colleague Councilwoman Jan Perry to recognize the founders of the Cherry Blossom Festival, Southern California, and unfortunately, Jan's not here this afternoon. The Cherry Blossom Festival, Southern California, is a family-friendly event that organized in Pasadena to share the Japanese-American culture with the general public while also carving a cultural perception to an already historic city for more visibility, publicity, and tourism. In the past, this amazing two-day event has taken place in the fine city of Pasadena. However, after five years, the rapidly evolving festival has decided to call Little Tokyo District of Los Angeles home. You're coming, Little Tokyo! We are very excited to welcome this outstanding festival to Los Angeles. Cherry Blossom Festival, Southern California will take place this weekend. Will include martial arts, fun areas for kids, a kimono and runway fashion show, and a host of other activities. The organizers of this cultural event are committed to sharing the Japanese culture with Angelenos, and have promised to raise funds for annual donate pink cloud cherry trees to our great and diverse city. They're going to put pink cloud cherry trees?
Yes.
Going to plant trees?
Yes.
Excellent. I commend the efforts of the... Yeah? No? Yeah, okay, really, huh? Okay, okay. Just want to make sure. I commend the efforts of the Cherry Blossom Festival, Southern California, its organizers, for bringing generations together and for exposing the mainstream population to a diverse culture and history. I can only hope that this annual event will continue to flourish. Thank you for making Los Angeles and Little Tokyo your new home. And we have a resolution signed by Councilman Jan Perry, the mayor, and all of the council members, and I know you folks have waited a long time. And after five years in Pasadena, you come to the city of Los Angeles, where you'll get great recognition. And not that Pasadena's not a good city, but LA is LA. LA's the place. 2016, we'll host the Olympics, we'll get the Cherry Blossom Festival going, and we'll continue that in Little Tokyo. So, the order of speak, who wants to speak first? Because we're going to give you all an opportunity. Since you waited so long, we're going to give you an opportunity to all speak. Every single one of you, and anyone else. Are you the spokesperson? There you go. Okay.
Thank you. My name is Wendy Anderson, and I'm the co-founder and producer of the Cherry Blossom Festival. We are an all-volunteer team that have been very dedicated and very excited to bring this to Los Angeles. We thank Jan Perry and her staff and all of the City Council for this opportunity, and Dennis Zine, definitely, and to talk about, and to further confirm the cherry trees. We actually are selling pink cloud cherry trees at the festival, and the portion of the donations that come in are going to go toward the purchase of pink cloud cherry trees for the One Million Tree Initiative for Los Angeles. And we are creating that into an annual event. It's going to get better next year.
Are we going to plant them all overseas or just in Little Tokyo?
All over, because we're going to have so many, we're going to have so many cherry trees.
All right, okay.
We just want to invite everybody to come, experience it. This is our first year. I'm the only one that's going to talk, because actually, we're still producing it, and there's a lot to do yet. We all have had very little sleep, so we need to get back and get producing it, and it's a very exciting time. And I have to mention one more thing, is that I have to commend the different city services and city departments in the city of Los Angeles. This was a monumental task, because this is a very large city, and everybody in every department has been so helpful and really helped us push everything through, so I thank you.
Now, a couple of things. It's this weekend, Saturday and Sunday?
Saturday and Sunday.
Time and where?
11 o'clock till 9 o'clock on Saturday. San Pedro, between Second and Third Street in the Little Tokyo District.
Everything's going to be blocked off?
Everything's blocked off, and on Sunday, it's from 11:00 AM till 5:00 PM.
So, come on down.
Come on down. Buy a tree for your city.
Free tree?
It's a free event.
It's a free event. The event is free. And again, it's on San Pedro, between Second and Third, and it's going to start on Saturday at 9...
11.
11.
It starts 11 o'clock on Saturday, and the council general is doing the opening toast of Japan.
The council general of Japan.
Right.
Okay, any other questions? All you viewers at home, be there. Thank you. You know, James, we got to hear from you. I know that you're not on the speaking agenda, but a former city employee for 55 years or 100 years or whatever, come on, James. You're involved in this wonderful project.
Thank you very much. This is not to take away also from Nisei Week that's coming up in August. We like to celebrate, Little Tokyo's been around for over 100 years in Los Angeles, and the people of LA should experience Little Tokyo and the Japanese-American culture. So, please show up this weekend. Thank you very much, Dennis.
Thank you. We'll go back to business. Mr. President, back to you.
Thank you very much. And for those of us who just returned from Washington, DC, where we were spending a lot of time lobbying, we saw beautiful cherry trees throughout Washington, DC. It was a very gorgeous time, so thank you for the festival organizers. That closes our introductions and our presentations for Friday. If we can go back and run through the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, did you wish to take up item number 79 out of order?
Yes, we do have a request... Let's run through the agenda first, and just while we have 12 members, get the ordinances knocked out, and then we'll come back and take 79 out of order if there are no objections to that. So, let's go ahead with the first item.
Okay. Item number one, there's a request to continue that matter to April 3.
Yes, if there's no objection, colleagues, we will continue item one until April 3. That is next Tuesday, so ordered.
Next item on the regular agenda is an item notice for public hearing. Item number two is a finding of public convenience or necessity in Council District 9, and a motion is required to either grant or deny the application.
Okay. Was there a recommendation on that one?
No, there isn't. It's either to grant or deny. The last day for council action is today, however, that's within the 45-day limit. So, if council wishes to continue that to Tuesday, when Councilmember Perry's here, that would fall within the 90-day time limit.
It'd still fall in... That, okay. Why don't we go ahead and... Let's keep that on the table. We'll check in with Council District 9 on that. Next items.
Item number three is also a finding of public convenience or necessity in Council District 10, and the motion is required to either grant or deny the application.
Okay. Check in with Mr. Wesson about that. Let's hold that on the table. Next item.
Okay, items four and five are both findings of public convenience or necessity, and the motion is required to grant the application. Those are in Council Districts 14 and 13.
Okay. I will move the one for number five, and for Council District 14, we'll move that motion as well. Go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay. Next item.
Item number six is a public hearing item. It's a communication from the city attorney and ordinance.
Okay, I'm sorry. Can we go back to three? We have been informed that Councilmember Wesson moves the number three for the finding of convenience. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. I'm sorry, go ahead, Madam.
Okay, I'm sorry. Item number six is a communication from the city attorney and ordinance, and it's a public hearing item.
Okay. I do not have any cards, so we will open and close the public hearing on that. Any members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That's approved. Next items, please.
Next items, seven through 38, are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, for the record, we did have cards on 17 and 26 and 32. Those public hearings have been held. That would require council motion. Any specials, Mr. Smith? One week, item number 32, that would take us to April 10, which we actually have recessed, so you want to go to the next Tuesday? Is it Good Friday?
The 10th is the recess.
Right.
I mean, it's not the recess, the 6th is the recess.
Oh, I'm sorry, the 6th is the recess, so would you rather have it that Tuesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday? Okay, so that would be the 8th of April. We'll continue that until... Without objection? Okay. Special, Mr. Parks?
23, we have continued for two weeks.
Okay, hold... Sorry, number 23, till when?
20, 20.
20, 20, okay. Continue that until when?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. Just to state, Madam Clerk, one more time, whether it was 32, it's continued till when?
I'm sorry. I believe you want, Mr. Smith, wanted to continue to Wednesday, which would be the 11th?
The 11th, okay. Got it. Without objection. Are there specials, colleagues? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held. Items 39 through 81, 10 votes are required for consideration. And, Mr. President, on item 63B, there is a substitute motion that has been distributed, and on 63AX, one of the special events, Councilmember Reyes wishes to amend the time from 2:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Okay. We will make that change. Specials, colleagues? We do have cards on 79, so we'll call that special. The other items I do not have cards for, so I will open and close the public hearings. Any other specials, colleagues? I believe 66, Mr. Parks, you wanted to call special 66 as well? The reward motion? Okay, I'll call that special for Mr. Parks, and 79 is special by Mr. Parks and Cards. No other specials? Let's go ahead on the balance then. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That's approved. If there's no objection, we'll go forthwith on number 53, please, and 49 as well, forthwith without objection. Next items.
Mr. President, do you wish to recess this meeting and go into the special meeting?
Yes, please call the roll for the special meeting.
Alarcón, Cardenas, Grill, Han, Weisar, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenell, Smith, Vice, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 12 members present, and a court, Mr. President.
Any specials, colleagues, on these items? 82, has a public hearing been held on that?
No, public hearings have not been held on any of these items.
Okay, so 82 we have card for, and 83 we have a card for, so we'll call those two special.
Do you wish to take them up at this time?
No, let's continue those back.
Can I call 52 special?
Oh, we passed it, but we can reconsider it?
Oh, we did?
Yep. Hold on one sec, we'll come right back to that, Ms. Han. On 82 and 83, let's go ahead and...
Is it 39 or 38?
I'm sorry, we still have 84 through 86.
84, A through F, yes. Oh, and 85 and 86 are the closed session items.
Okay. Let's hold those two on the desk, and let's open the roll on 84, please. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. If we can continue those items back into the regular meeting, and we have a motion to take up 79 next.
And do you want to... We're going to reconsider 52.
And we will reconsider 52 as well, I'm sorry. Let's open the roll, reconsideration for 52, and we'll call that special for Ms. Han. Please open the roll.
Which one do you want to...
Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
52.
Yeah, 52.
Then I want to ask to take...
12 ayes.
Okay, and that will be called special. We had a request for 79, the Olympics matter to be taken out of order. Is there any objection to that?
No, if you'll agree to take 52 out of order too.
We will...
Then I will have no objection.
All right, we'll make sure. Let's take up 79 first. We have two speaker cards, or three speaker cards, excuse me. First out in the valley, Miriam Fogler and Sharon Brewer. Miriam Fogler?
So, I'm asking you, Mr. President, and the City Council, to please change your agenda to make it where we have business and public first before you do presentations, because I'm missing a lot of these things here that you did, so, because of the presentations. It's really made me so tired, and I'm hungry, and I want to get out of here, and this is a nice weekend, very beautiful day outside, but it's not going to be so pretty on Sunday because obviously, I'm not going to be able to go to the Persian Park because it's going to be blocked off by this guy, and obviously, he wants to double the money. Now, he's become very greedy, and so, it's not very good business that's going on here at the City Hall, because I went down to a meeting here on Wednesday, and I don't like the idea that you think that you can have Olympics here if you don't take care of business at hand here first. We need to really sit down and discuss how we're going to get the money, how much is it going to cost? We need a report on how much the Olympics are going to cost us. I love sports. I've always been a very big sports fan, and I love the Dodgers too, but why are we spending $2,000 for them, just the open day? City money that could be used for a very important thing, to pay for our police and fire. Why do we have to pay trash fees to pay for these things? You need to be accountable for what these costs are accruing to our city, and to the county, and the state, and the federal. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sharon Brewer.
Hi, Sharon Brewer. My basic concerns are, one, how can the infrastructure take and handle the Olympics when they can't even handle what they've got now? In nine years, are they going to take and have suddenly improved everything? The other thing is, I don't see anything that goes and says what the costs for the Olympics are going to be, or what the cost to prepare for the Olympics are going to be, and where that money is going to come from. So, before you go and take and want to do an event or something, I think the homework should be, you find out where the money's going to come from, and whether or not you're going to be able to actually have the event without it impacting the community at a great expense. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Barry Sanders is our next speaker here, or should I say, the great Barry Sanders. the great Barry Sanders is our next speaker. Come on forward.
Please don't say that.
You're part of a semi-official body with the government, so please, why don't you come here to the table? Because I know some of our members wanted to ask some questions as well. But if you can give us a quick opening, I know the public raised some questions, and certainly the press did, about cost and things like that. This would be a great time to lay them out. And thank you tremendously for the work that you've been doing in the work of the committee.
Thank you, President Garcetti. Thank you to the whole City Council, not only for inviting us to speak before this motion, but thank you for the tremendous support each and every one of you has given to this effort to bring the Olympics to Los Angeles in 2016. We are in a two-city race now to be selected as the American city to vie for the final selection, which will be in October 2009. We are only in that two-city race because of the support of the City of Los Angeles, every single one of you who have, of course, voted for several unanimous resolutions in favor of this, as well as the support of the other agencies of our city, certainly the Mayor's Office, and also people who are who work tirelessly in support of City Council. I just want to mention, in terms of the resolution before you now, Steve Ongeli, David Gershwin, they've done tremendous things for us in the last week to work on a very short timeframe. Aaron Gross in the Mayor's Office, and Jimmy Blackman, and in the City Attorney's Office, David Michelson worked till late, late last night on his birthday to get this ready for today. Ted Jordan, his other colleagues, have been terrific. But more than that, we've got the departments of the city, the Department of Airports, the Police Department, the Fire Department, the City Planning Department. And then we look at the other elements of the public-private partnership. We've had active participation from the Convention Center, from L.A. Inc., from the MTA, from the State Assembly. Fabian Nunez certainly was a champion of ours in getting through a 65-to-1 resolution yesterday in support of this bid, and offering a state guarantee that's not dissimilar to what we're asking for today. The State Senate takes it up right after the recess, and the bipartisan leadership of the Senate, as well of the governor, have said that this will pass and be signed into law. The cities of Long Beach, this County of L.A., and City of Pasadena, the City of Anaheim, this is something that's public-private. To my right is David McGowan, our CFO of PricewaterhouseCoopers. He and his colleagues have worked at no charge, pro bono, for this effort for over a year. Richard Werthlin of Latham &amp; Watkins, our General Counsel, the same, of all the work that Latham &amp; Watkins has done, and our tireless President, David Simon, whom you all know. This partnership is not just a way of thanking you all, but it's to call attention to how Los Angeles is different in this campaign, different domestically as to the other American cities that we've faced, and different internationally, where the government alone is expected to do these things. We have had an absolute Niagara of offers, many of which we have accepted, for free help. We have spent a very minimum of cash. We've spent millions of dollars of pro bono and in-kind help in getting to where we are, and that's characteristic of this great city, more than any other city in the whole world. So, there's a story there. We plan to, we hope to, we expect to win this race. But even if we don't win this race, there's a story there about how this city came together to do this. It's really an amazing, amazing effort, and I'm so proud to be a colleague of all these people. What we're asking for now is for City Council to send the strongest possible message to the United States Olympic Committee, and from them to the world and the International Olympic Committee, that we want the Games here in 2016, that our bid is second to none. We do not want public money in answer to the speakers who came before me. We do not seek public money. We do not expect to need public money. We expect to have a generous surplus to share with the people of Los Angeles, the people of the broader community, and the world in the Olympic movement. We've told that to the United States Olympic Committee and to the world. However, we do need to have a competitive bid, a bid that's second to none, a bid that is in all ways a number-one bid. And to do that, we need you to pass this resolution today, and we thank you for doing so, even in advance of your doing so. This morning, we were able to announce, with the help of several members of the City Council, an economic impact report that shows that at a minimum, conservatively estimated, we will have a $7.2 billion positive impact on the economy of the Los Angeles area in 2016 if we have the Olympics here. That would include 68,000 jobs. It stands for the fact that we're proposing the most democratic Olympic Games ever held, Olympic Games where people can come for free if they can't afford seats and they're youngsters. People can have inexpensive seats, because we'll have the expensive seats subsidize the inexpensive seats. People can come to our two gathering places, at Grand Avenue Park, and also at L.A. Live, at no charge, all through the Olympics. People can go to neighborhood block parties we're going to have all over this community. The Games will be open to everybody, with tickets and without tickets. But more than that, the effect of the Games will hit all the people who are working people in this community. We're not going to be doing a lot of building, so it's not going to be something you have today when the building is happening, and the structure's done, and the workers have to go away. We're talking about supercharging our already great tourist industry, creating jobs that are in the service sector, transportation, hotels, restaurants, retail. That's the effect of the Games here, the effect of the Games in the world, where it'll be to show the world, in the 21st century, a city where people can live together, even though they're different, and get along in harmony, a show of pluralism that the world needs to see. And that's a contribution we can make for the Olympic movement that no other city can make the way we can make it. We extend our thanks to you. We appreciate all you have done, and all you'll still do for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parks, we call it special, and then Mr. Rosendahl will be second, Ms. Han, Mr. Smith, and then we will go from there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank Mr. Sanders, Mr. Simon, for all the work they've done. I think he's done a great job of explaining where we want to get to. I think it's important for us to realize that our bid has to be competitive. We cannot go into the bid process as the April 14 date comes about and have something that's not shored up. We also know, just as those who are concerned about funds in the City of L.A. and whether general funds are impacted, just be aware that we are still spending the money from 1984, that the Amateur Athletic Association still has a budget of funds from 1984, that they're dispersing on a monthly basis to youth programs and activities that have a sports orientation in the City of Los Angeles. So, that gives you a clear impression of why we believe this is a very safe motion to go forward on. Also, all of us were here when Ambassador Young came in and said, "We used your model in Atlanta." And they now are reaping the benefits of that process for years to come for their programs. Many of us were here in different capacities in 1984. We all remember the glow in the city for 10 years afterwards about the Olympics. When you think about the billions, not millions, billions of dollars of revenue coming in, you think about the tens of thousands of jobs that will be created, and the hundreds of thousands of visitors to the City of L.A., it's a deal that I think is very clear in the benefit of the City of L.A., and that we don't have to go out in a great effort to start building infrastructure. Our infrastructure is already in place. We can spend our time, energy, and funds on programming and develop the Olympic spirit as it's intended. Mr. Sanders made a comment to the Olympic Committee that I think this gives the whole essence of our effort. The reason our facilities are already in place is that we have the Olympic spirit day in and day out. We do not have to go out and build a facility, because these athletes at the Olympic level already live and practice and train in this city and in this area. The other benefit is that I believe 80% of all of the events that will be scheduled will be on the rail line.
94%.
94%.
Yes, sir.
94% will be accessible on the rail line, and all the events are in L.A. County, different from 1984. So, I would recommend that we vote on this unanimously, move it forward to give the strongest package possible to the organizing committee to know that the City of L.A. is serious about the 2016 bid.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to say to Richard Alakon, welcome to our body, and it's good to have you back and talk about votes. This is a very important vote, and we really want your unanimous support on this issue here today. $7.2 billion worth of multiplier effect to the economy of California will come our way, and 68,000 jobs will also come here. You know, the governor, the mayor, the county, the entire state is behind this. Carson City isn't an L.A. city, but that is where part of it will be. UCLA will be where they will live. And boy, did they get the red carpet treatment when the delegation came here at UCLA. So, we're all united, we're all organized, and we're all looking forward to this Olympic in 2016. And colleagues, our support for this today will have another oomph, another muscle in our punch as the great city. And frankly, we are the capital city in the world in the 21st century. We have every nation on earth here, every language spoken here, and substantial amount of people from each of these places. So, it's like Olympics are coming home to Los Angeles. And when you talk about winning in gold medals, the world wins when Los Angeles is picked. So, let's make it happen. And thank you all for your work. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Ms. Han is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in great support of this being a unanimous decision here on the City Council today, as we move forward with the final two in the competition for the Olympics. And, you know, many of us were here in '84. I certainly was. I had a brand-new, six-week-old child that I dragged to the Olympics. And Los Angeles was beautiful during the Olympics. Everything that we were afraid of, fear, crime, traffic, never materialized. It was one of the most golden moments in our history to have the '84 Olympics. And it is going to be a boon to the economy. It is going to bring jobs. But you know what else it will do? It will give our young people. It will give our young people something they will never forget for the rest of their lives. And I love the fact that you're talking about making these events accessible to our young people, who would not otherwise be able to afford a high-priced ticket to the Olympics. My own dad, Kenny Han, in 1932, he was raised in a very, very poor family in South Los Angeles. He was one of seven siblings. His mother was a widow. They had very little in terms of money. He and a bunch of his buddies climbed the fence at the Coliseum to watch the '32 Olympics. And it is a story that he loved to tell. And until they were found and kicked out, it was such a great experience for those young boys to participate in what the whole world watches. And he grew up being a great supporter. He was on the Olympic Committee to try to get the '68 Olympics, then the '72, then the '78, and then finally the '84. He took my brother and I out of school for the '68 Olympics down in Mexico City, where we watched the Bosberry Flop be instituted. So, you know, my family has always known the value of having the Olympics, and it's such a great part of the history of my family, and certainly for many families who have been raised in Los Angeles, and even those who may never have experienced an Olympic. So, it's really about the young people. It's really about giving them something to dream for, something to be excited about, and something to see themselves participating someday as a medal-winning athlete. So, congratulations. You've done an excellent job so far. And I think today, we're all going to give you a unanimous support in bringing the Olympics back home to Los Angeles, where it belongs.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Han. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. I was very pleased to be at the dinner a few weeks ago for the visiting group from the Olympics Committee analyzing Los Angeles' bid. And what I heard from each and one that I talked to was, we have absolutely no doubt L.A. can put on a fine Olympics. You've done it before. You know how to do it. And they're very convinced, and that's why we're in this final two. And so, I'm very pleased to stand here, and I had the pleasure of working in 1984 for David Simon. And I remember what it did for L.A. And it's still talked about today. And I have people still come up to me and say, "You know, the one thing we did so great in this city was the 1984 Olympics. The city came together. Every race, color, and creed came together, be a part of it. They loved it. And L.A. shined like L.A. has never shined before, and a weekend again in 2016." And so, I'm very thankful for this group that have worked so hard to get us to this point, to get us in the finals once again, to be considered as the Olympic bid for the United States. And I have no doubt, we will do that. And this document today helps us achieve that. To answer the critics, and I know there will be those that will criticize, I remember the criticism in the San Fernando Valley in 1984 Games. We want to insulate the city from responsibility. We showed we could do that. There's been two great successes in Olympic history, Los Angeles, 1932, and Los Angeles, 1984, the two great financial successes in the Olympic history movement. And so, we know we can accomplish that. What we're doing today is giving you that paper you need to the Olympic Committee to guarantee that they are very comfortable with our bid, something we didn't have to do in '84, we do today. But I have no doubt, we will never have to cash in that receipt, that this will be a successful game as always, because we have more facilities than we had '84, we're better prepared than we were even in '84, and this will be a truly great Olympic game, and we'll never have to worry about it. And there will be continuing legacy from the 2016 Games, just as there were the 1984 Games. They'll continue to benefit Los Angeles and the youth of our communities with the Olympic-type programs and athletic programs. So, I'm very pleased to stand here in support of it. As a former member of David's staff, I remember, and finally, one last thing, I remember the closing day of the Games, when we brought the athletes out of the Olympic Village and UCLA, I was on the last bus, at the back of the bus, on the last bus out with the, I think there were maybe 40 buses of athletes. I was on the very last bus. And we closed the entire freeway system from UCLA all the way to the Coliseum. And as I'm driving down the road, I'm going, "This is L.A., and we're closing the freeway. They're going to kill us." What happened was, is we drove by every off-ramp. There were hundreds and thousands of people, cars lined up on the on-ramps, waiting to get on the freeway when it opened again, not booing us, but cheering and waving flags and thanking the athletes for coming to L.A. It was a shining moment that I get choked up today about, because I saw the greatness of L.A. come out that day. And the Olympic Games has done that, and I will do it again. So, I'm very pleased to be here. I hope I'm here in 2016 to enjoy another Olympic Game. God, thanks so much. You guys are great.
Mr. Reyes.
I just want to stand and join the chorus here, and thank you for your hard work. What greater stage than Los Angeles, when you look at this international pivot point in this world economy, with the largest communities of many other countries are right here in Los Angeles. Not many other cities can say that. But in a day and age, where technology has flattened this world, where our economies are so interlinked, and to have the ability to showcase what this city can do will be a tremendous, tremendous boost. And for me, it's for those kids who have a strong understanding of their culture, of their language, that sense of self-esteem. We talk about the economics, we talk about the infrastructure, but I think it's just as important to celebrate what it means to the individuals who get lost in this great city, and to be able to identify where their mother countries, that their parents or their grandparents came from, and to actually be in a place where you can say, "That's where my roots began, but this is where I'm at today as an American," is something that truly has no dollar value. So, for that, I thank you for your strong efforts. I think we need to continue celebrating this great diversity, and we're here to support it in any way we can. Good luck.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. And our last speaker is our newest member, quite a familiar face, Mr. Alakon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Wait till I say something. You may not applaud. I'm not going to repeat all the accolades that my colleagues expressed. I certainly share in those accolades. I was there and enjoyed the Olympics thoroughly, and claimed Los Angeles' proudest moment, as so many people did in Los Angeles. But I was struck by a comment that Councilmember Parks made regarding the Amateur Athletic Foundation, which quite frankly, is not supposed to have any money left. They were, by contract, supposed to spend that money. And so, I want to remind my colleagues that in a time when we are struggling against massive gang violence, where we could redirect kids into positive athletic activities and other kinds of activities that were qualified for this type of funding, where we have the L.A.'s Best Program, which is not quite finished, and we have so much more funding to do, I think we need to hold the Amateur Athletic Association accountable for spending more money and creating more solutions in our community. I absolutely am supportive of this resolution, and not that I don't recognize the accountability factor and the responsibility that we have to marshal this program through, and recognize that problems could emerge. But we don't assume that just because in '32 and in '84, we were a financial success, that this will necessarily be a financial success. But as long as we stay to the grind, as long as we keep focused on our goal of financial success for this Olympics, we can get there. But let's not assume it. But I did want to raise the issue of the Amateur Athletic Foundation. I think they could have done a far better job since 1984 to expend that money to solve some of the problems that have continued to exist. some of the problems that have continued to exist, which created the fund in the first place, and they need to be spending that money more appropriately to solve problems in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Allocon. And I know we're going to be at a bear quorum soon, so I will reserve my words for another day, but thank you all very much for the work that you're doing. We really very much appreciate it, and we know that the 31st are looking very bright here in Los Angeles, and we expect to fully do our part as a city to—oh, Mr. Zine pressed his button. See, I try to give concluding remarks, and then it's the popcorn effect, I call it, you know, little one-last kernel pops when you don't expect it in the microwave. Mr. Zine.
I would be shortchanging Mr. Zine if I didn't illustrate what we saw in Beijing, China, when we went on that tour for the trade mission to Asia, and to see what they're doing, and the excitement. And I remember in 1984, when I was a L.A. motorcycle supervisor, the excitement here in Los Angeles, and everybody kept talking about the traffic. And we had a news conference earlier with the mayor, where there was no traffic problems in Los Angeles, and a lot of people benefited from that. And what I said earlier—I'm going to say it again—to get that 2016 pin, L.A. 2016, these are going to be very, very valuable. And there's many people out there who have pin collections. Former Councilman Mike Hernandez, they were talking about our pin collection from the Olympics. These become keepsakes. So, the whole effort that you're going through is going to benefit all of Los Angeles. You talk about the jobs, the economy, everything. It all works. We have all the venues, we have the excitement, we are the world-class city. So, Beijing, 2008, Los Angeles, 2016, and we're behind you to make it happen. So, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. And you invoke Winston Churchill's words, that everything that needed to be said had been said, but it hadn't been said by everybody.
That's right.
So, we thank you.
That's right.
But it shows just how unified this council is. From Malacca on design, A to Z, we are 100% behind you, and we appreciate your good work. So, with that, let's make this official. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved, and we will send that forthwith to the mayor for his signature. Thank you very much.
All right.
Send that forthwith. We have a request from—we have a request from Mr. Parks, who also needs to depart on number 66 to take that out of order. If there is no objection, we'll take up 66 at this time. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a renewal of a reward motion. Many of us remember the families that came in on the double homicide in 77th Division back in 2004, where Brian Butler and Melvin Knowles were killed in 77th District. The reward motion is being renewed. They were both fatally wounded at 7800 Block of Ninth Avenue when unknown suspects opened fire with an assault weapon. At the time, Mr. Butler was actually on active duty in the U.S. Navy, and had finished serving his tour of duty in Iraq and was on leave until his next deployment, which was to be in June 2004. Neither Mr. Knowles nor Butler were affiliated or part of any gang activity, and this crime is still open, and this is a $75,000 reward. And we'd ask the community support to call Detective Herman Fedlar at 77th Division at (213) 485-1383.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this? Not—let's please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Thank you, Mr. Parks. Colleagues, we're at a bear quorum now with Mr. Parks' departure, so everybody, please sit tight, and let's ensure that we get through all the rest of the business. Item 52, Ms. Hahn had called special, but she said that her issues had been resolved there, so let's go ahead and take that up. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Madam Clerk, we can go to general public comment. I know we've had some folks that have been very patient this morning, and like, take up public comment, and then we will finish the items on the agenda. Without objection, Arnold Sacks is our first speaker, and then Sylvia Lynn Hawkins will be our second speaker, and Melrose Larry Green will be the third speaker.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much. Just very quickly, regarding the audit hearing that was held on Friday's meeting, some things came up at that meeting regarding an audit done by the controller for Lawa. And I just think some things should be investigated regarding that audit that weren't really discussed during the meeting. Number one, the fact that the Lawa is allowed to use city property—or allowed to have somebody else use city property and gain revenue off of that without the city benefiting from it. The fact that in the audit of the ATS, there was a claim by ATS that they actually paid Lawa more money than Lawa was required to get. Also, under what part of the city code is a nonprofit organization allowed to have—hold hearings over LADOT infractions and collect fines? And finally, Lawa has a policy regarding other nonprofit organizations and where they can meet and how they can raise funds. How come this nonprofit organization is allowed to collect revenue from a fourth party for fines—for rental of city property? It would be nice to get some answers for these questions. I think the city should look into this, especially since the mayor has talked about us having a budget deficit, and we're actually not getting any money from city property that's being used by a fourth party. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Our next speaker is Sylvia Lynn Hawkins.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Ms. Hawkins. As we continue such a lovely day of honoring women's, I would like to honor my lovely wife, anchor, reporter, Lesley Snight, for doing such a great job for these last five years. I would like to also honor our Hawkeye military and all that have been fighting in Iraq war, whether they are dead or alive, for such a wonderful job they have done. I would like to honor Senator Pepsi Carter for making such a standing position and not allowing our soldiers to stay in Iraq or money to Iraq. I would like to thank her for, again, taking a strong stand and not being double-minded. I would like to also give respect and honor to my father, ex-president John F. Kennedy, and my mother, daughter Dee Cox. I would like to also thank all of the officials, police, firemen, Los Angeles Police Department, and everyone that have cleaned up Los Angeles and all of the 50 states while, for the last five years, Iraq war has been going on. I am very thankful also for our continuation as of working together to make sure that we make wiser decisions concerning abortions, gay license, and many more decisions that must be debated upon as people get hired and fired. I think we are one of the most powerful, wisest United States of America governments in the world. I am very proud to say that my profile of redirecting Hawkeye military and redirecting 58 states of women's to the 50 states means that war will begin in the United States of America soon, as we continue to work on immigration and all borderline anti-tourists. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hawkins. Melrose Larry Green is our next speaker. Is Larry still here? Okay. Miriam Fogler in Van Nuys is our next speaker. If you can go out to Van Nuys.
She had to leave.
Okay, Sharon, you're next. So, go ahead, Sharon.
I'm not ready.
I'm sorry.
I need my paper. Can I just get a—
Okay, I'll call you in a second. Candido Morris is next here. Is Candido Morris here? Not Eric Alexander?
Elsie.
Sorry.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. My name is Elsie Alexander.
I'm sorry, Elsie. My apologies. Go ahead, please.
I'm a representative of the Christmas Addicts Brigade. On Sunday last, March 25th, we had a civil rights march down Broadway in downtown Los Angeles. During that event, one of our marchers was attacked by someone from the sidelines. She was hit in the chest with a Coke bottle, a Coca-Cola bottle. We were offering a $500 reward for the whereabouts or information leading to the arrest of the person who created—or who committed this assault. And the Christmas Addicts Brigade is dedicated to running down the person who did this. Our civil rights are being violated by people who are not from this country, and our civil rights are being abused by those people. And we're here to serve notice that we are intent upon locating this individual, the person who is responsible for this. I realize that I'm not elected politician, and I don't deserve your respect, and that's why you're all looking in other directions other than at the podium right now. You have a lack of respect for the people who vote you into office. I think there's an inherent problem there, that we come here seeking your help and seeking your guidance, and you don't even have enough respect for us to even face us when we speak to you. I think that your arrogance outweighs whatever good you might do for the community—
Mr. Alexander.
—unless we are taken seriously here. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And just so folks know, there are monitors that are on people's desks here, so they're often watching what's happening right here on the monitor, and we appreciate that, Mr. Alexander. David Hernandez is our next speaker. Mr. Hernandez here? Okay. Ted Hayes? And then after that, we'll go back to the Valley, Sharon Brewer.
Last—good morning, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. President, Council. As you all know, last week, we had a civil rights march to defend the rights, particularly of black people, because that is our heritage in this country. Along with watching the citizens from foreign countries illegally within ours, they were dragging our American flag through the gutter, spitting on it. One guy tried to set a fire. Thanks, God, a man of a major American descent stopped him, said, "This is my country. You're not going to burn my flag." And then, as a gesture to get at me, one of the young people, one of these citizens from a foreign country, walked up to me with this flag, ladies and gentlemen, America, with this flag. They ripped it up in my face and threw it in the street. Our American flag, this flag that our soldiers have given their lives for, and other citizens. This is the people who say they want to be in this country, they want amnesty. If they are doing this kind of behavior to American citizens, who are permitted to walk our streets and speak our opinion, what will they do, sanctuary city, if we give these folks amnesty? They don't give a doggone about us flying flags of another country. They are not under our jurisdiction. I went and I picked that flag up, ladies and gentlemen, and I looked at them, and they thought I was going to crack their heads. No, I picked our flag up, and it's tattered, torn pieces, and I brought it together, and I hugged it, and I kissed it, and I raised it up into the air, and I said, "Red, white, and blue, these colors don't run." They may have the numbers, but we have the might of the truth on our side. It's just a matter of time when these citizens of foreign countries are going to recognize the offense that they have committed, particularly against my black people, who are homeless in the streets of this country. We are directly dying from this thing. And then they claim the 14th Amendment, Council people, the 14th Amendment, which is the national birthright of my black people.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
Thank you very much for your time, Council.
Thank you.
God bless you.
Thank you for your patience. Appreciate that. We'll now go down to Van Nuys, and Sharon Brewer is our next speaker.
Thank you for giving me another chance.
Sure, no problem.
Sharon Brewer, Sunday, April 1st, 2007, Persian New Year event, Lake Balboa, two days away. Vendors started putting up booths yesterday. Event advertised on Iranian radio. Attendance, possibly 20,000 people. Facts as of 9:30 a.m. today, still nothing posted at Lake Balboa telling the non-Farsi-speaking public about the 4/1/07 event closing part of Lake Balboa to the public. According to Recreation and Parks, event promoter will be charging $10 for everyone over 12 and $5 admission for 12 and under. The $10 charge is double the admission of $5 for everyone at last year's 4/2/06 event. Money goes to the promoter, not the city. To me personally, I will have to pay the promoter $10 to look for fishing line and hooks and see if any wildlife needs to be rescued in the restricted area. I asked Recreation and Parks to provide in writing something from Recreation and Parks or the city of L.A., saying that a promoter can close a portion of the city park to the general public unless they pay a fee to the vendor. Recreation and Parks' response referred to LAMC Section 171, subsection 3. The section deals with the rules and regulations governing the use of L.A. airports. "I may be blond and female, but I'm not stupid. Did they think I wouldn't look this up?" When Recreation and Parks was told what Section 171 dealt with, their response was, "You may be right, however Charter and Municipal Code do give Recreation and Parks the authority. They will research those sections and get back to me with precise sections at a later date." CD6 and Recreation and Parks, along with the promoter of the 4/1/07 Persian New Year event, are continuing to discriminate against all non-Farsi-speaking public by keeping this event a secret. This conspiracy by CD6 and Recreation and Parks to withhold vital information about this partial Lake Balboa Park closure on April 1st, 2007, to the public is not acceptable. CD6, what happened to events for the good of the community and not about making money? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is Keith Hardin here? No. Okay, that's our last public comment. And Mr. Reyes, wanted to say something?
Mr. Council President, I just wanted to state for the record that there was this person of Spanish surname, an immigrant, who was one of the first casualties that gave his life for this country in this so-called Iraq war. It is people of Spanish surname, Latinos, immigrants, have been the most highly decorated as heroes in the majority of our wars for this great country. So, I just want to state for the record that we are a country of many people, of many colors, of many ethnic groups, and it's together we make this great country. And I just want to make sure we recognize the sacrifices that we all have made, but in particular, those of Spanish surname Latinos. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes, for that. If we can return to the agenda. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number two was being held on the desk, and that was the finding of public convenience and necessity in Council District 9.
Okay. Do we get an answer on that one? Why don't we go ahead, and we'll continue that until Tuesday, if that still falls in the window, as you mentioned. So, without objection, we'll continue that until Tuesday. Next item, please.
Next item is item 82, and that was called special for cards from the public.
Okay. Item number 82 is next before us. We have a card here. Joaquin Serna is our first speaker, and then Jose Aguilar, and then Carlos Morales. Joaquin Serna here? Joaquin Serna, no. Is Jose Aguilar? No. And Carlos Morales? Welcome, Mr. Morales, and thank you for your patience.
Thank you, President Garcetti, and Councilmembers, for allowing me to be here. My name is Carlos Morales. I'm the publisher and editor of The Voice newspaper servicing northeast Los Angeles areas. I service the communities of Boyle Heights, El Surino, and Lincoln Heights. I submitted a challenge to the Eastside Adelante Project elections that happened a couple of months ago, and the reason for my challenge is that the outreach that was done in our communities of El Surino wasn't fair. I did receive a letter from the CRA, and I'm hoping that the Councilmembers do have a copy of that letter. Okay, thank you. In the letter sent to me on March 20th by the CRA in response to my challenge, the PAC election states that the advertisements were placed in both English and Spanish in the El Surino Star on January 4th and February 7th. I would like to see those issues. The El Surino Star ceased to exist in 1991. That publication does not exist. It also says that it was advertised in the Alley Daily Journal. Our community of El Surino does not receive that publication. The letter also states the advertisements were posted at the Eastside Sun and the Mexican-American Sun, newspapers produced by the Eastern Group Publications, with a combined circulation of 140,000 newspapers. According to their own media kit, the publication does not circulate in El Surino, and I do have a copy of that here. I have spoken to executive board members of the Neighborhood Council 32 and over 100 businesses along the Alhambra Avenue Valley Boulevard corridor, which the Eastside Adelante Project affects. None of those businesses have gotten any notice on this.
Okay, thank you. If you want to give that additional documentation, we'd be happy, Sergeant at Arms, to take that.
Thank you.
Okay. That was our public comment on this. Anybody from the Council wishing to be heard on this item? I see nobody on the speaker queue, so we have this before us. If you can please open the roll on this. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is 83, and that was also called special for cards from the public.
Okay. On item number 83, Arnold Sacks. On item number 83, Arnold Sacks, would you like to come forward?
Good afternoon. It's just like blowing smoke, actually, but I just am curious to find out, this is another bond being issued or taking steps to issue a bond by the city, and I'm curious to find out, or if there'd been judge by the city, how this bond will be issued. It will be issued under the same pretenses as the bond for the police department, or will it be issued under the same pretenses as the bond for LAX, both being done differently? And there doesn't seem to be any kind of recommendation by the CIO's office regarding this bond issuance. Is that because they don't have a recommendation?
Sorry, is that your comments?
Those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. We'll see if we can get you that answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that closes public comment for this item. Any members wishing to be heard from the council? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved.
Mr. Garcetti, if we could ask that to go forthwith, as requested by Ms. Perry.
Yes, if there's no objection, we'll send that forthwith. Okay? Next item.
Next items, Mr. President, are the closed session items.
Okay. In accordance now with California state law, we will go into closed session to take up legal matters before us. Any vote that we take which requires public announcements, we will do so when we come back into open session. So if we can ask the room to please be cleared, and we will go into closed session.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
The item before council is item number 85, and that settlement in the case of Levant Guillory versus City of Los Angeles, and the settlement amount is $999,999.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the votes. 10 ayes. That item's been approved. Forthwith to the mayor. Next item.
Next item, Madam President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Those will be posted and referred.
There's an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Perry requests to be excused Wednesday, April 4th, to leave at 11:00 a.m. or, excuse me, to arrive at 11:00 a.m. for city business. That meets council policy.
I will be excused.
And that clears the desk.
Thank you. Madam, do we have any announcements today, colleagues? Announcements? Yes, Mr. Smith?
Yes, tomorrow, for those who like to hike, I'm leading a hike with the Sierra Club from Sesonan Boulevard at O'Melveney Park. We're going up into the park with the Sierra Club, take a nice hike, someone wants some exercise. And then on Sunday, we have our traditional Earth Day out at the Chesworth Reservoir at 10:00 a.m. for anyone who wants to come out and see that beautiful preserve that's the largest in the city, 1,300 acres of environmental park, so. Come on up, 12th District.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Any other announcements? If not, do we have adjourning motions? We do. If we could ask, please, everyone to rise. Everyone to please rise.
Madam President?
Yes.
Just one quick announcement. UCLA is in the Final Four. The big game Saturday, and it was good to see Southern California schools, us and UCLA, get as far as they did. Almost became an ALPAC 10 tournament with Oregon in the picture, but let's root for the Bruins.
And Deion suggests that we have an eight clap on Tuesday when we win.
Great.
Okay? And that's especially for Mr. Smith, although Mr. Parks told me he was going to root for UCLA. You'll do that, okay? And I'm sure Ms. Perry will as well. On behalf of Mr. Parks, I'd like us to adjourn in memory of Virgin Simmons, the mother of Suzanne I. Simmons, who died March 19th of complications associated with Alzheimer. Her daughter, Ms. Suzanne I. Simmons, is a dedicated community leader at the Park Mesa Heights Beautification Committee Chairperson and Advisory Board Representative for Keep America Beautiful. Funeral services will be held Wednesday, March 28th, in Akron, Ohio, at Wesley Temple AME Zion Church. She is survived by her children, Lee Simmons and Suzanne I. Simmons, and asks that you adjourn in her memory. Yes, Mr. Rosenthal.
As Mr. Parks asked me to adjourn in the memory of Jose Luis Ramon. On March 13th, 2007, Jose, a 14-year-old ninth-grader student at Crenshaw High, was struck by a motorist traveling eastbound on Slosen. He sustained severe injuries as a result of this traffic collision and was transported to California Hospital. He never regained consciousness and on March 14th, 2007, expired at the hospital. He is survived by his mother, Marie Ramon, and his father, Elvardo Hernandez, and four brothers, Israel, Christian, Ivan, and Jose. May he rest in peace.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Also, on behalf of Mr. Parks, we ask that we adjourn the council in memory of Chief Cliff Gerst. Retired Police Chief Cliff Gerst died on Sunday, March 25th, after battling a long illness. He died at his residence in San Mateo. Chief Gerst retired from the San Carlos Police Department in 1996 after spending seven years as chief of police. His term of police chief capped off an exemplary 31-year career in law enforcement. A vigil was held for the chief on March 29th at St. Bart Thalme Church in San Mateo, and a funeral mansion is scheduled for today. May he rest in peace.
Thank you. Any other adjourning motions? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. This meeting is now adjourned.